Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. This evening, we have three postponements. 21 Calhoun Drive for a zoning map amendment. 21 Calhoun Drive for a final site plan and special permit. And Greenwich Country Day School for a final site plan and special permit. We're going to begin by making three decisions. On the first of these, this is the Second Congregational Church for a zoning map amendment. And the seated commissioners will be Albin, Goss, McRae. Yes, no?
Oh, here for Fox.
Don't correct me. Albin, Goss, McRae, Levy, and Yaski.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. So, we will begin discussing this item. Does anybody want to open the discussion?
Yes.
The HO, would anybody like to talk about the HO on Second Congregational Church who would like to open the discussion? I believe we should talk about it rather than entertain a motion. Looking at the silence, would you guys rather just go to a motion?
No, I'd like to make some comments.
Okay.
If that's okay with the rest of the commission, because we have a fair amount of background in this case. As I remember it, the application really came in requesting a rezoning of the project into an HO primarily to expand the use of the site and incorporate commercial leasing of the building, which is not permitted right now. And if we were to grant the HO, it would be permitted under Section 6109D5. So, for those who are not familiar with the application. That HO would let or grant the commercial use of this property, even though it's in a residential zone, it's in 1,000 feet of another zone. So, you know, that caused us some issues. On the other hand, this has been the case in numerous cases around town that has worked rather successfully in permitting this kind of rezoning at this stage. And I want to mention, having brought it up in the hearing, that this property, I've been driving by for 45 years, it's a beautiful property. It's clearly a very special building. It was built in the 1850s. It's one of the only styles of this type of building. And I just don't mean the building, this is an issue that I've brought up several times. The HTC came in and also endorsed this, but I enlarged it to say, or we enlarged it to say, that it's just not the building, it's the whole site. It's the site, how the building was built on the site, it's the openness to the site, it's at one of the highest points in downtown Greenwich, the church is a navigational point off the sound, and we just didn't want to see other buildings going up. So, we think that we'd like to get included in this motion, the notion that it isn't just a building. I hope that's not under debate anymore, that in fact, it's the entire spatial relationship around the building. And this almost three-point, well, almost three-acre site is indeed historic. It has achieved that with the HTC and their recommendation, and it's definitely worthy of preservation. And what we're basically doing here in an HO is if we grant this HO, which has not been decided yet, they'll be able to do, and we can get into the site plan, what they're able to do on the commercial side, but they have to then preserve this building. It's an extra layer, kind of a belt and suspenders, to have very, very close and stringent review of any potential development on this site. And obviously, what we're saying is we don't want to see it. The application was recommended by, as a historic overlay designated by the Historic District Commission back in late 2019, actually, 10/24/19. So, if you haven't read that letter, you ought to, in terms of what they cite as the historic significance of this particular project. So, with that, that comment, and as I understand it, we can't put a condition on a rezoning application. You can make comments, but you can't condition in that sense of the word. We'd like to move ahead at this point and propose, yes?
I'm not in agreement with you.
Okay.
The, and I'd like the other commissioners to opine as well. Mr. Hagney, in presenting-
You didn't hear whether I was going to propose to accept this or not, you're just jumping to the-
Yeah, you said, "I want to move ahead and propose."
Okay.
And before, and you said, "We want to move ahead and propose," and I'm not in agreement.
Okay.
When Mr. Hagney discussed this application, he said that this is a mixed neighborhood right now. It is zoned residential, and he said it's got a lot of commercial uses in it now. And his point was, what's one more commercial use? My own sense is that that is a tipping point, and that if we want to protect residential neighborhoods, when a residential neighborhood already has commercial uses, in this case, I don't want to increase the level of commercial use. This applicant is also proposing a coffee shop for charity, a charitable use. I see that not as a commercial use, but as an extension of the church mission, which is protected by federal law under the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. But the ability to add rental space, which is for offices, to me crosses a line that I do not believe should be crossed in this neighborhood. In some other neighborhoods, it could be appropriate where there isn't a tipping point. But in my case, I have very strong feelings about this. I've been wrestling with this for weeks, and that's where I come out. Anybody else want to make comments?
I think understanding the nature of the HO, as it applies to, the intent of this application is to look at the building and provide more to the building. But I think Mr. Yaski brought this up, is that it actually, it's a special site as well. And I think when talking about an HO, we always need to be cognizant of the potential future development of the property. We had looked at other HOs where it was appropriate, and development was basically being curtailed by just its size. In this case, it's a very large site, so there's a potential of a lot more development that could happen there. On the flip side of that is actually that anything that does happen there does have to come back to us. We do have an opportunity to see this again. But I feel we're kind of little, kind of letting the cat out of the bag a little bit, because I think it'd be more difficult to actually look at something in the future, or even another commission looking at us, something in the future, in the future, once we have this established. It does give more use to the building, which I understand. But I think, taking a look at that, that particular portion of the street, we do have kind of that mix between commercial and residential. I think we're more residential at the far side, at the bottom of North Street, than here down at the Post Road. So, I'm not too sure, really concerned that we're actually encroaching into the residential neighborhood, specifically if we're not changing the building. The building's been there, it is part of the neighborhood, it's an important part of the neighborhood, but I don't believe that we're going to be changing it drastically as long as the building doesn't get changed. I think a good example is something that happened up the street, saved a building, building looks great, it's still part of the neighborhood, you never know there was any difference there. So, my thoughts on that. Anybody else?
Mr. Levy?
I, I think that the point about this becoming more commercial is not, has to be better explained. It seems to me that there is commercial use there, and having-
On the street, you mean?
No, no, on property.
Well, it's all not-for-profit right now.
Yes, but it's still commercial use, so.
No.
Yep.
Not under our regulations, it's not-for-profit, so.
But for practical purposes, it's, you know, it's not residential.
Okay. It's institutional, how about that?
Institutional, and this is a matter of code and zoning to define different uses. So, from a practical point of view, not much is changing, but what is changing is the status. So, you have the status of a nonprofit now being able to have a profit-making business on-site, which is another matter. And to my point of view, I don't mind the idea, I think it's, takes some burden off of the membership. And they have good intentions and good thinking behind what they're doing. The question is, how does it, how does it fit in with the town plan and what our intent is for the community? And I think that it is, I think that the intent of the applicant and the hopes and dreams of the community and the zoning allow for something like this to happen. It's a way of meeting the needs of the applicant halfway. And I think that there's plenty of opportunity to make, to make sure that the application and its intent stays true to, it stays true to, it's how it's been represented here. So, I think that I'm not quite as disturbed as others about-
Just me.
-the application, but I do appreciate the idea that it does open a door, and you, and we, as a, as a deciding commission, have to, have to be sure that the intent here is something that we can preserve and control in the future, which is very difficult to do, because we may not be here when something else comes up. So, that is, to me, what I see as the, how the, how the application lies out in our task here.
Okay. Ms. Goss?
Well, I was looking at the regulations, and in 61095, the Planning and Zoning Authority, we have discretion, we may authorize office uses in a property that's historic overlay within 1,000 feet of a commercial building zone, which is what we have here. And I feel that the benefit, echoing Mr. Yaski's thoughts that the site is, he's been driving by it 25 years, and he obviously gets a lot of pleasure from it every day, every time he drives by. And I think this site can afford a lot to this, to the town, and I think it needs to be protected. And I think that it would relieve some burden off the church to be able to have an office use here. And I think that, I mean, I can foresee, if, I was thinking that if we put something in the, in our decision, saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission deemed the entire property, including the open space and natural resources and topography, to constitute a unique estate, then we would have, we would have protection and we, I think that the, I think the, I'm in favor of the application being granted.
One comment in response to Mr. Levy and Ms. Goss. In regard to us easing the burden for the church, as you both mentioned, I believe that is not within our scope. I believe we should not even have considered that matter. We are not here to make churches, to help churches survive, that's just not our job. And I, I think there has been an effort to sway us in that direction, but that it is inappropriate. So, I would not, I was bothered by the fact that that argument was used on us by the applicant, because I think it's inappropriate. We are not here any more than if a store on Greenwich Avenue told us that they couldn't survive unless we did something for them in a zoning incentive. That's just not our job. And I think it should not have been part of our consideration. And again, I recognize that this is a mixed neighborhood, that it does have commercial uses, that this building does have institutional uses in it, but in my mind, there's a strong distinction between not-for-profit and for-profit. And I believe that it is our role to protect residential neighborhoods and that we should draw the line. So, I'm still in that position.
Yeah.
But I believe, Mr. Yaski, that if you were gonna, as you said, move forward, you might want to do that.
Okay. Two comments on that. One, I appreciate you not mentioning, I did not include the church comment, because I agree with you. Number two, we split this application between HO and the site, so let's keep in mind-
Yes, it has to be split.
It has to be split. The HO would give them the right to do something, and then we have to vote separately on the site plan, and we can put restrictions in. At that point, we shouldn't be talking about restrictions on just the HO at this point in time. I still believe that the HO gives us that belt and suspenders, gives us an extra layer if they ever want to come back. And I'm sure they're hearing that we want no other work or development done on the site, and we're going to put it in the record in very strong words that we've been using today. So, I will leave it at that. I would like to propose, I guess the right way to do this is to suggest that this application be approved at this time.
Well, you may make a motion if you so wish.
I would like to reply to the concept about easing the financial burden. What I really meant was that if we want, if we want the building preserved, that we need the funding, the church needs the funding to preserve the building. It would help us to have the building preserved, rather than helping the church maintain its other facilities. So, I would narrow my comment.
Okay.
It might be more appetizing, more acceptable to you.
Mr. Yaski, may I have a motion?
Sure. I'd like to move to approve the Second Congregational Church of Greenwich's zoning map amendment to rezone 48 Maple Avenue from an R-20 to an R-20HO zone at this time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And may.
That's four to one?
Four to one.
Four to one.
Okay. Our next decision item is Second Congregational Church again for a final site plan and special permit. This does not mention the office use in the agenda, but that is part of it. The first part is to change the use to, of the, a portion of the first floor to a vocational training program for people with disabilities, which will be called Coffee for Good. The second part will be that they will consider having office uses on this property. Does anybody wish to discuss this? Any comments?
Looking through the application, I think the, we understand that the elevator is actually a critical component to making the structure work, that the Coffee for Good use is something that would be, I think, a benefit for Abilis. I think the real issues that I'm sure a bunch of us have are the office uses. And I would think that I'd like to, to understand and have some kind of a condition to understand the office uses as this is developed. It would seem to me that actually, when you say office use, to me, I think of desks and chairs and people working and, you know, you know, eight to six kind of thing. What I would like, would like to see is keep it to that. You know, if we get something into it, it's a trading, it's a, it's a trading desk situation or something else, it's a little bit more concerning, because we're actually getting up beyond its bounds of a confined business use in the building. But I think actually, providing for the elevator is a good idea. I think the Abilis Training Center is a good idea, but we really need to keep an eye on what's going on with any commercial use in that building or in the future attached to that building.
Do any of you, I'm in a bind here, because I'm strongly in favor, I think the Coffee for Good is particularly, I, it's, I admire the purpose, but in addition, from a zoning perspective, I believe it is an extension of the church mission and should therefore be subject to approval. Do you, does anybody have conditions you would apply to the commercial use?
I, I would-
Coincidentally?
Coincidentally. I agree with the chair on the Coffee for Good. I think we ought to do several conditions. Number one, and I think the chair suggested this, that they are asking for 46 interior seats. I think I'm repeating what you mentioned at one of the meetings. We are strongly suggesting, and I would put a condition, that it'd be half that number in a soft opening. They'd have to, let's give it, I would think, three to six months, come back to us if it's working, or make changes to come back, but start at, what is that, 23 interior seats, and have that soft opening. In addition, as far as the, the commercial use-
That's, I'm more interested in how you-
Right. I would restrict it to what I think they're looking for now. Now, I could be wrong on this, but it looks like the office space on the first floor and a small space in the second. I have square feet in here of 1,123 feet on the first floor and 754 square feet on this, on the second floor, and I would restrict it to that. Once again, if situation changes, they can come back, but I would like to really put both of those in as significant conditions on this site, given neighbors' concerns and giving our concerns about traffic, parking to some extent, but it's more traffic. It's a very busy intersection. I think I was misquoted on an earlier meeting about what I mentioned going through that intersection, it can be very difficult. So, we're anticipating some issues there and some kind of workout, and, and the soft opening would help in a major, major way. I'd also put a condition about landscaping. We did this down the street. I think the landscaping to the north, particularly bordering that neighbor, I've looked at it, needs to be significantly enhanced with the appropriate plannings, as well as the plannings to the west, which would be the neighbors on Moore Avenue at this point in time. So, that would be a third condition, and I think they can come back to staff on that.
Do you want to since, everybody agree with Mr. Yaski?
Yes.
And want to give him a shot at a motion? Okay. So, Mr. Yaski, would you like to?
Is there, is there any thought to-
Yeah, I didn't finish.
I'm sorry, no, but I just, before you go on, I was just going to have you convert it to a motion-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Rather than say what you might do if it was-
Okay, so we do a motion and then repeat that, what I said, or is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, do a motion and repeat every, start over.
Start over.
And do it as a motion, so that we don't have to repeat the whole thing.
I would have done that arrangement, I have, I know.
And then I'll throw in some belt and suspenders.
Okay.
But before you do that, you were going to say something, Mr. Levy?
Oh, is there anything to restricting the, the times of the business use? Or is that the-
Of the business use or the coffee shop use?
Business use.
Um, nine to five?
That's, that's fine.
Nick?
I think that should be part of the-
Victoria?
Yeah, I would say, I would say eight to six.
Eight to six is the coffee shop, so you want to leave that, and then it would be consistent. The coffee shop is open eight to six, staff coming in 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. We had talked about, just to throw this in, because you opened with this, they, what they said they would not do is, they had originally wanted to do porch seating as well, we wouldn't do the porch seating initially, so you could go ahead and propose a soft opening that also excludes the porch seating. And if you want to give it a shot, and then we'll fill in other stuff as you go.
Okay. I move to approve the Second Congregational Church of Greenwich's application for a final site plan and special permit to make additions to the Mead House in order to provide handicap accessibility, as well as the change of use to a portion of the first floor and the second floor, along with vocational training for people with development disabilities. And I would attach to that the following conditions, that the, that the coffee shop that is proposed to be limited initially in a soft opening to 23 interior seats only, no external seating at this time, that the, let's get this in, that the commercial use of the building be limited to that 1,123 square feet on the first floor and 754 square feet on the second floor, that there be no other expansion of space for commercial use without coming back to the commission, that there be no use for medical purposes, medical offices at all at this site. That's a restriction, or condition we put on other sites similar to this. And that, let's see, boom, 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 landscaping, that the applicant provide robust, to be approved by the staff, significant more appropriate plannings on the north and west side of this site. That's very, very serious about that. And that, did I miss any other conditions I mentioned? Anyone else have any other conditions?
The, I think we should make a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that they can provide sufficient parking for the Coffee for Good during its hours of operations. They've given us a split. Coffee for Good will be open from 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Staff will be there from 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. There will be one manager and two shift supervisors on-site at all times. I think we mentioned the 46 seats. We, you mentioned the porch seating, they are adding external lighting to the rear, it shall meet our regulations. There was, there was some comment from Beta about improving pedestrian access, and the applicant has agreed to do that. They do have a green sheet from Wetlands as of September 13th. The ZEO has signed up as of the 21st of October of last year. The Sewer Department has been given the information it had requested, and the applicant should address any further comments it receives. The conservation comments were mainly related to the invasive species, the bamboo, which is being removed, and also as, to request the more robust landscaping. We decided that the hours of operation for the business use would be nine to five. Yes?
Well, I thought you just said you didn't, you wanted to be-
Eight to six.
Eight to six, I'm sorry, eight to six.
Right.
But Monday through Friday.
Right.
And not Saturday, right?
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody-
The coffee shops open, but not the office.
Right. Does anybody want to throw, I suppose-
Yeah, one other thing.
Yeah, go.
As Ms. Goss mentioned, I've been driving by this site, I would like, it's a small thing, but important, I'd like to see if the applicant can work to minimize parking in the front of the building, I love the building.
Perfect.
On non-peak hours. We understand that with the coffee shop and the office use and all that, you're going to need some of that parking. But whenever they can, it'd be nice to push people, there's a big parking lot in the back, certainly, certainly on the weekends, and if they don't need to park in front of that building, I would, you know, I would make, make that as a comment or finding.
And you reminded me of something, which is that the applicant has agreed, the commission notes that the applicant has agreed, that when there are special events at the church, I believe its 15 spaces will be cordoned off for Coffee for Good during those events. Anybody else want to throw anything in?
As far as the parking in front, I think that's pretty hard to manage, so maybe there's a way of saying, it can only be used when something happens, like when, when there are significant events going on, something like that. And that's, and so during the normal course of-
PDPA?
-business and stuff, they don't, they can't use it in front. Maybe that's a better approach, because then it's easier to understand what, the usage of, of the parking.
Do you, since you've developed this concept of the soft opening and them coming back to you, do you want to try that for the first-
Sure.
-three to six, and then see how it goes?
Yeah.
If it doesn't work or is problematic- If it doesn't work or is problematic, what have you?
Yeah, my comment was, I'd like for them to try, emphasize, I'm not, you know, I'm not black and whiting. I know that they need the parking, certainly for some of the special events, and I assume for the coffee shop, they're gonna need that parking.
Right, and the other thing that the commission should note is that the applicant has represented that the people be, receiving the vocational training will be brought in by van and will not be driving themselves, that the primary cars will be the customers. Okay, anybody else want to throw something in before we ask for a second? Nope, okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Goss beat it. So, Goss seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have one more decision to make. Our next item is 1205 East Putnam Avenue LLC, David Rogers, for a preliminary site plan and special permit at 1205 East Putnam. Does anybody wish to discuss this before we entertain a motion?
We've seen a lot on this application, we've heard a lot on this application, we've discussed a lot of this application, but I think one of the interesting things is that the applicant came in with a preliminary, which is appreciated. We really got a good start of this to understand the nature of this project, the scope of it, neighbor concerns for this project. We've gone, we've come a long way with this. I think we have come to a point where we need to go a lot farther. They've changed the building, they've looked at the site, they looked at the number of units, a couple of different things. But I think actually, understanding and appreciating the fact that it's a preliminary, we got a lot of things out into the open here to discuss. I think it's maybe time to actually really start to get into the weeds on this, this particular project.
Well, we, right now, as proposed, it has less than 20% the last time we saw it, but-
Yes.
We would have to approve it as 20% is based on our, on the interpretation of the actual regulation. Anybody else want to make comments on this? I forgot to say that it's Albin, MacRae, Levy, Goss, and Lo are seated on this.
I, I would say that the, that the traffic circulation through the property is very tight still, and the separation between commercial deliveries and, and cars would be a, a nice organizational kind of flow for the property. I think that it, it shouldn't cheat the, the green space in front. The, it's a fairly tall building on the, on, on the avenue, and the, in order for this to look comfortable on the site, the, the green space should have enough breadth and depth so that it doesn't look like a sixth sister to, to the building.
You know, I'm gonna step back a sec. I'm still not convinced that this has been right-sized. I, I'm not sure it's not, I'm still on the fence that this isn't just too much building for the piece of property and the space, because of the traffic, because of what that area's like. I, I could have waited another month to see if I could make up my mind on this, because I just can't get comfortable, completely comfortable on whether this is right.
Right, and that's part of what I'm trying to get to. It's, it's trying very hard to fit a, a, a program in and, and short, get short, other things are getting short shrift, because, because of, of getting these four units in, we can, we can give them some kind of dispensation on these other things, but these other things help it fit into the site, and so we can't discard how important the other parts of our regulations are, and it doesn't mean we have to give in on everything. And I think that green space matters.
I agree with you.
And the, and how, how it sits on the residential street matters, and those are the things that are gonna make a difference, because that's how you will always see the property from day to day, and of course, traffic matters, and so the way that the, that the traffic is organized on the site is extremely important to the flow of traffic off the site as well. So, to have a good understanding of how deliveries are made, how, how garbage is picked up and, and how residents come to and leave the building in a safe manner, I think is ultimately what we need to insist on here.
Ms. Goss, Mr. Lo?
I was, if you take, I, I realize that the applicant has made efforts to reduce the bulk, to increase the open space, and to decrease the height, and to modify the architecture, but I just don't think that's enough. If you look at the 617 standards, it's, just each one of them seems to not quite fit. If you look at materially, I mean, the 617 says that the building should not materially affect adjacent areas, it should, the building should preserve the important open space and feature, and should not interfere with pedestrian circulation, and not affect, not adversely affect safety in the streets, and be in scale and compatible with surrounding uses. That seems to be a large one, especially for the Riverside Neighborhood Association. So, I think, I think that, that applicant, I would like to see the applicant work on all these areas more.
Okay, Mr. Lo?
I would, I would echo the concerns of my previous, the previous commissioners. I would add to Ms. Goss's comments about the regulations, that the standards are looking for a design that is in harmony with existing or proposed neighborhood appearance, and where it would, would not materially adversely affect residential uses, nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents, nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics, and I, I think this application falls short on, on, on that criteria alone.
Okay. You're not seated. What would you like to do? Would you like to give a bunch of modifications and conditions and try moving the preliminary forward? Yes, okay, Mr. Lo? With what you want to see when it comes in for final, do you want to give that a shot? Or are you, I guess that's what we should try first, right? Is to see if we can get it conditioned. Okay, so let's, you're nodding, Victoria. Peter, are you, are you, Peter Levy?
Thank you.
And Peter Levy, you're inclined to see if we can work out some conditions for this building that would satisfy the commission on final?
Yes.
Mr. MacRae?
Yes.
I would like to know what those conditions are.
Right, would be, and then you'll see where you come out.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, I saw the look on your face, and it was like-
It's material.
Yeah, you'll decide after you hear them. Okay, so, Ms. Goss, Mr. Levy, Mr. MacRae, do you have some thoughts on how you would condition this?
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to give it a shot?
I can start as a motion, or I can just have-
As a motion.
Yeah, go ahead and start as a motion.
There's a host of things to-
Okay. You don't have to say it twice, you know, that's what we were trying to say.
1205 East Putnam Avenue, this is a preliminary site plan and special permit, P L P Z 2019 420 and 421. I think findings that the Section 6110E outlines the pre-application meeting process, the applicants complied with that.
The pre-application.
Right.
Oh, okay, with staff, sorry.
We've had significant neighbor concern on this project, specifically substantial testimony on Neil Lane issues. I think the commission finds that the bulk and height of the original proposed building were in conflict with 617D, eight, and 10. And although, although the applicant has described the issues surrounding excavation to set the parking area below grade, there was little to no engineering of the site completed. I think it's, find it difficult for the planning commission to gauge this assessment, and we should be getting some more information and evidence of those limitations. It's noted the applicant has worked to reduce the scale and bulk of the project, and the applicant has sought to resolve Neil Lane and access and egress issues. Noted that per Section 614A, Planning and Zoning Commission staff had waived the requirement for Greenwich summary report during the preliminary review, and I really think that we seek to provide the applicant with guidance concerning this proposal at this point. Therefore, I have motion to approve, move application to final site plan and special permit, noting the following notes and comments. First and foremost, the applicant needs to address Section 6110C2, and that the MID unit count shall be a minimum of 20%. The applicant shall address Section 6110H3 for parking in garages for two-family and multifamily residential purposes. The applicant should proceed with civil engineering design that complies with the Town of Greenwich Strategy Manual and provide a full Greenwich summary report. Applicants to provide more evidence on the limitations surrounding the excavation to set the parking below grade. Applicant should continue with the architectural design based on the hand-rendered elevation sketches presented at the February 11th P and Z meeting. I think the applicant shall return the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to presenting to any revised designs to A R C. Applicant shall seek ways to lower the overall height of the building by lowering the floor-to-floor heights, or by partially or totally burying the garage. The applicant shall submit building sections indicating the ceiling heights of the parking garage levels, and they, should be submitted, of the parking garage levels, and should be submitted to ensure that they are high enough to accommodate delivery vehicles in the loading zone, tow trucks, emergency vehicles, so on so forth. The applicant should submit east-west and north-south site sections that include the adjacent buildings. I think we really wanted to see how this worked with the other neighbors. Planning and zoning staff shall seek comments with, on the revised site plan by the Greenwich Fire Department. Applicants shall submit to Connecticut D O T for review and comment on the extension proposed to the U S One median. The applicant's traffic engineer shall address issues with the westbound site exit and Neil Lane loop back to 95, and I think this is what we had talked about. People had said that actually, if that median is extended, then nobody can go east, so everybody's gonna go west, and then just loop right back around on Neil Lane back to 95. We need to have a real good understanding of that, and actually specifically understand what the D O T thinks of that kind of a situation. As required by Section 6110H5, the applicant just submitted declaration of restrictions, stating the covenants and restrictions that run with the land for all the current, future owners of MID units. Must be that provided for review and acceptance. Also, as required by 6110H5, applicant submitted a marketing plan to ensure the building, so on so forth. Applicants have supplied a construction phasing plan, company of the soil erosion control plan, so showing the parking of construction vehicles and access in and out of the site. That's actually quite important. Provide a photometric plan of all site lighting on the project. Provide a detailed landscape plan, and the town tree warden should be consulted to review any proposed trees in the sound, Town of Ridaway. Applicant shall indicate on that landscape plan compliance with Section 6161, indicating proposed perimeter plantings are continuous planted screen, and they would adequately screen parking in all, all seasons with a mix of evergreen and deciduous plant materials. The noise specifications and location of all mechanical equipment proposed should be submitted, and bike racks should be shown on the plans.
Question?
Yes.
Elephant in the room. The last time they came in to us, they proposed 18 units. We didn't have all the associated numbers, because it kind of came in at the end. Where do people come out on size, what you're looking for, number of units? I think it would be good to, if we're gonna move this to final, to give some kind of guidance other than the 20%. And also that, in reviewing our parking regulations, that we don't see it as possible to waive the parking under 6110. So, the parking has to comply. So, that means a change in the configuration. Does anybody have any thoughts on what it would take to be acceptable?
I think from where I am, it's, it's the responsibility of the applicant to figure out that 20%, and it's the responsibility of the applicant to comply with the regulation concerning the parking.
Okay.
If I say 10 units, that's a number, as opposed to what is the applicant gonna bring back in? Because the applicant, excuse me, knows his numbers, and I think actually it's up to them to figure that out, not us.
Mr. Lo?
I, I agree with Nick. I don't, I don't know whether, whose responsibility it is, but I, I'm certainly not in a position to design this building, or to comment on it, so I, I think that the ball rightfully goes back to the applicant on adhering to what the regulations are and coming back with something.
Well, and, and maybe, I'm sorry, Ms. Goss, do you want to go ahead and then I'll comment?
It's just, no, I can't decide, design the building, but I know that the applicant had, as far as the parking, had said that the parking could be increased by decreasing the open space, but that was a trade-off, but there again-
How about making the building smaller?
Well, I can make, well, that applicant, but I, I can't, I'm not in a position to design.
So, maybe what we do is that we just say that we are continuing to look, as you said, Nick, for less massing, a smaller building that complies with 6110, and for which the parking is in compliance with the regulations, because we find that we cannot waive them under this application, and that we ask that the applicant continue to work on a reduction of the overall building. And that we ask that the applicant continue to work on a reduction of the overall building. I can't, I don't know what else we could say to it. Staff, thoughts?
I just had one thing, the parking issue. That's specifically the site for that is 6110H1 Roman numeral three that says that parking shall be provided in accordance with the standards of 6-155 for multifamily dwellings. And it's not listed in, it's not one of the incentives that we have discretion over for this application.
Correct, yes.
Katie, any thoughts on any more guidance that we could provide the applicant on this?
I mean, the only thing I can think of is with respect to the FAR, because I mean, you've talked about how to reduce the massing with the look of the building. So, I mean, it sounds like a .9 is just totally unpalatable at this stage. So potentially, I don't know how people feel about looking at the FAR of the neighboring properties.
What a great idea.
Trying to get closer, you know, closer, you know, obviously understanding that it's got to be a bit more so that you can subsidize the MID, but potentially closer to that. And that might be something that you could ask them to explore.
Okay.
Particularly because it's an all-residential building.
Okay.
You're allowed looking at the FAR of the underlying zone. You know, how much is really needed in order to subsidize those other units kind of relative to what's around them.
Looking at the neighboring buildings.
The commercial buildings, I mean.
Commercial buildings and an average kind of thing to understand what, how the FAR there works.
And to address Peter Levy's concern also then to look at building coverage and lot coverage. Okay, you can't sit next to Katie if you're going to distract her.
Okay, come on.
That the applicant would also consider ways to increase the green space while accommodating sufficient parking. Okay, all right, so that's it, do I have?
I had an idea.
Oh, good.
It'd be wonderful if the applicant would look at a .75 FAR.
Okay. All right. And so we will ask the applicant to consider a further reduction of the FAR as low as .75. And with that, do I have a second? Mr. Levy seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we now begin the public hearing? No, I'm sorry, sorry, we don't begin the public hearing. We now have a discussion item, which is a pre-application review for the Greenwich Hospital's Smilow Cancer Center. Okay?
Mr. Hagman, before we launch into this, people may not realize it, but you're kind of like the first pre-preliminary P&amp;Z submission, second, okay? You're one of the first.
I was going to mention our status as guinea pig as part of this application.
Well, we kind of.
Pre-application.
Pioneer. We kind of view you larger than a guinea pig, let's put it that way. You are.
I guess I'll take that as a compliment, Mr. Yessi.
It's meant to be a compliment at every level, but I guess my comment was, we go through a lot of these and we get into the detail and rabbit holes and this is, this, this application is hugely important to the town, one of the, you know, one of the major, major, if not the major institution in the town. And the reason to do the pre-preliminary was to come in and talk to us about what you're having in mind. My only comment is, I'd love to keep it at the level of talking about, this is kind of what the hospital has now, this is what they want to do, this is why they want to do it. Here's the need, and one of your questions right up front, here's the need. As opposed to, you know, we're a half inch within the zoning regulations, if you know what I mean. So if we could keep it up at that, whatever you're about to present, I mean, I've gone through this. We had an earlier discussion with the hospital that went directly into the POCD. It's written in for the first time that we need to be meeting and discussing the long-term healthcare needs of the community, Greenwich. And we're fully aware that Greenwich Hospital serves other residents too, and I'm sure we're going to get into that. But this is a very important application and I'd like to start at the top, work our way down. Sometimes, as you know, we get stuck in a rabbit hole and we burn up time and I'm trying to prevent that in this. Because if we do this well this time, it opens up to a lot of other applicants.
And. And we're very much in tune with what you just said. What we're bringing to you this evening is concept sketches. We have not gone ahead with any kind of schematic design. This is very, very early in the process of planning. And, and we need to ask the question and get your feedback on what is appropriate here. What is, what are the needs of the community? What does the, what is the hospital ready to provide in terms of those services that are not here now? And that's why Norman Roth is here as president and CEO of the hospital to really go over that with you. I was just going to have a little bit of preamble and then I was going to have Norm speak directly to the various, the very issues that you were raising. The property that we're looking at is at the corner of Lafayette and Lake Avenue. Currently comprises eight separate parcels that we would then combine into one. It's at the traffic circle where Perry Ridge and William Street also feed in. In addition to Mr. Roth, Diane Kelly, the COO and executive vice president, is here to also speak to hospital operations and how we see this as benefiting the community. And we have Luke Voiland from Shepley Bullfinch, who's also going to go through the sketches that we've provided to you as part of submitting this pre-application. And Norm's really going to go through why are we here today and why we feel this facility is important to the town. And then Diane will go through how we would envision this functioning. As you said, this is a pre-application, it's under section 7-159B of the Connecticut general statutes. It allows for discussions and on prospective projects, because this is not yet a project before you, without a vote or a commitment. And as we said in the submission of this, we're not looking for any kind of decision on your part, but we're looking for guidance, thoughts, suggestions, concerns, so that we have an opportunity when we actually bring an application to you to address those. We want to have an open and frank discussion. Feel free, not that I need to tell you, that you can jump in at any time, because I know you're more than capable of doing that.
Interrupting, you mean?
Yes. I had interrupted, I wrote that out and stood, put in, just jump in. Your POCD that you just adopted speaks directly to what we're bringing to you this evening. And, and I want to quote what it says in the POCD. It says, "In respect to resident demand, the hospital is focused on improvements to the physical plant outpatient license, such as the Ben Heim Cancer Center." And there are two sections in the action items that we directly address this evening. One is to bring in a pre-application submission, so that you have the opportunity to look at significant projects like this without having to commit to anything. And the applicant has the advantage of not having to spend all that time and effort developing those plans, only to find out that they're moving in the wrong direction. And so that's, that's the first part and you can already check off that action item on your POCD list. The second is Objective 6.4, which says, should be effort to support emergency service departments, Greenwich Hospital, and local healthcare organizations to promote top services to Greenwich residents. And that again is what brings us here this evening. It's providing top healthcare services to Greenwich residents with this new facility. With that, I'll ask Norm to address the importance of having this cancer care facility for our town residents.
Thank you and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to have a dialogue with you tonight about Greenwich Hospital, about healthcare in 2020 and beyond, and the specific needs of, for improved cancer care services at Greenwich Hospital to better serve the needs of the town. Just a quick history of Greenwich Hospital. Greenwich Hospital was founded in 1903 by Fritz and Harriet Hyde and originally opened on Millbank Avenue. Was there until 1917 after Commodore Elias Benedict made a very generous donation to Greenwich Hospital, five Perry Ridge in Greenwich and $250,000 to build a new hospital building. At the opening of that building, Commodore Benedict said that his friends and colleagues had suggested to him that the hospital be called Benedict Hospital, based on his generosity and philanthropy in opening the hospital. His reply was that, no, this is not the Benedict Hospital. This is the hospital for the people of Greenwich and should be Greenwich Hospital. And in the mission established by Fritz and Harriet and reendorsed by Commodore Benedict, our mission is to serve the residents of the community of Greenwich to the best of our ability. Following the opening in 1917, there were a series of renovations that occurred in the 40s, 50s, 60s. And then as this commission knows, in 1990, there was a new zoning amendment creating the H1 and the H2 zones, which led to the renovation and new construction of today's Greenwich Hospital. The Helmsley Pavilion opened in 1999 and, you know, we're now 21 years in that pavilion. And the Watson Building opened in 2006. Since then, from 2015 on, we have been focusing on how to continue to improve the services within the organization. We have looked at many of the outpatient services in Greenwich Hospital and decided that we would better meet the needs by moving those services to more convenient locations. One of the first things we did, we moved our physical therapy, occupational therapy department to 500 West Putnam, along with pediatric subspecialty and cardiovascular services. That single move of physical therapy coming out of the hospital, we moved about 140 cars a day out of the garages of Greenwich Hospital. Between outpatients, about 125 a day, and then corresponding staff. But that was really just the start of a larger plan to eventually convert Greenwich Hospital to 100% private rooms. I say 100%, that's not exactly correct. We're going to have three rooms that are still semi-private, but 200 of our 206 beds, by the end of 2020, perhaps early 2021, will be 100% private rooms, meaning the needs of patients and families for privacy, for improved infection control, and to have conversations with their physicians. So healthcare in 2020 is undergoing enormous change, has over the last 30 years. 30 years ago, there were 5,200 independent hospitals in the country and 100% of the 36 hospitals in Connecticut were independent. Today, there are only four independent hospitals remaining in the state of Connecticut out of the now only 25 hospitals that are still in existence in the past 30 years. The four independent hospitals, two I would call healthy or mostly healthy, and the other two are actively looking for partners to try and navigate the difficult waters ahead in healthcare delivery. Now, I started by saying there were, you know, over 30 hospitals. What happened to those hospitals? Well, quite frankly, the smaller ones closed. St. Joseph's in Stanford, many of you may remember St. Joe's. Park City Hospital in Bridgeport and then Milford, New Milford, Sharon, Charlotte Hungerford, Johnson Midstate, et cetera, all have become part of healthcare systems. Greenwich Hospital, and I believe we have the best of both worlds. We are part of the Yale New Haven Health System. Yale New Haven Health is the sole corporate member of Greenwich Hospital. However, we are still a local hospital and people ask me all the time, are you local or are you regional? And I say, yes, we are, we are both. And we provide service to our residents in Greenwich, but also to the surrounding community. It's required, you know, by law in terms of emergency care and patient choice, which is a very important factor in healthcare delivery today. So Greenwich Hospital has a local fiduciary board of trustees with the direct responsibility and accountability for the quality of medical care provided in the organization, the medical staff, the financial operations of the hospital, and they have the authority to hire and fire the hospital president and CEO in consultation with the president of the Yale New Haven Health System. So our board has substantial authority within the Yale New Haven Health System, unlike many of the other systems that exist in the state of Connecticut. And when I said best of both worlds, why? Because we are a $435 million enterprise, the largest private employer in Greenwich, but we are part of a $5.2 billion healthcare system. And with the sole corporate member model, we are part of a fiscal obligated group where we are all severally liable for all debts and services and financial performance of the entire system. But our board, our Greenwich Board, you know, with many, with the majority of them residents of Greenwich, having the authority to manage the finances of the system. Every, you know, our healthcare system, yes.
Just being a numbers guy, the $435 million and the $5.2, is that like revenue or the value of your enterprise?
So that is revenue. So $435 million of revenue at Greenwich Hospital, $5.2 billion in the Yale New Haven Health.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, we are all nonprofit, so every, all the operating margin we generate gets reinvested in the organization to further improve healthcare services. So being nonprofit, you would think we are entirely tax exempt, consistent with the IRS regulations in terms of charity care. However, the state of Connecticut has a gross receipts tax in which Greenwich Hospital pays $30 million a year to the state of Connecticut as a gross receipts tax. From that, there is a minor distribution for undercompensated care. We get about $2 million back. So we have a net tax expense to the state of Connecticut, which goes into the general fund of $28 million, which is part of what we have to make up on an operating basis, you know, from year to year. And I said further that we have the best of both worlds. We have the best of both worlds because we are affiliated with Yale New Haven Health, Yale New Haven Hospital, a 1,500-bed academic quantenary medical center, and one of the, you know, finest universities in the world, Yale University. And with our relationship, it gives us access to recruit full-time faculty to Greenwich to work full-time in Greenwich, yet they have the benefits and recognition and the science of Yale University. Yale University, the Comprehensive Cancer Center at Yale is one of the original comprehensive cancer centers created under the War Against Cancer in the early 1970s. And the list of scientific advances that have come out of Yale are too numerous to list. list, but they have really been instrumental in reshaping the delivery of healthcare services around the world, not just here in Connecticut. So what we're talking about doing is moving towards a cancer center, and before I get there, I said, I answered the question, are we local or are we regional? I say, yes. And one of our measures is inpatient cases. And today at Greenwich Hospital, 53% of the approximately 12,750 patients that we treat as inpatients each and every year reside in Westchester County.
Could you repeat that stat, please?
53% of our inpatients, and we have approximately 12,750 inpatient cases each year, reside in Westchester County. The remaining 47% overwhelmingly are from the town of Greenwich. But I should also note that somewhere between 37 and 40% of Greenwich residents seek and get their care outside of the town of Greenwich. And you may ask, well, why does that happen?
And is that cancer only, or is that global?
That's all services. If we look at cancer only, that number is almost 50% of Greenwich residents seek their care outside of Greenwich. Why? Well, access to the latest research and scientific advances in cancer, access to an academic medical center with the highest quality physicians available to provide the care, the reputations of organizations like Memorial Sloan-Kettering, NYU, Yale New Haven Hospital, Mount Sinai, et cetera. And we have an outstanding cancer program in Greenwich. However, up until our relationship was further enhanced last July with Smilow Cancer Hospital, we did not have the same access to the top-quality academic surgeons. We did not have the full scope of clinical trials and latest research available to address the scourge of cancer. But now, and what we are suggesting, is to further enhance that. And when I look at what Greenwich Hospital's cancer program is today, in the Cohen Pavilion, part of the Benheim Cancer Program within Smilow Cancer Hospital, that's a tough sign to try and put on the, to put on the road. But today, the Cohen Center is about 25,000 square feet. It houses our radiation oncology program, two linear accelerators, and the space is fully utilized, our infusion center, 16 infusion chairs, medical oncology, and breast cancer. And the Cohen Pavilion Benheim Cancer Center is primarily a breast cancer center program. We treat over 325 breast cancer patients each year. But when we get down into the other prevalent cancers, when we look at the urologic cancers, you know, prostate, kidney, and bladder, last year, we treated 13 of those cases. We do not have, you know, the top urologic surgeons performing the cases, and therefore, our residents choose to get their care at a facility that provides that level of services. Thoracic cancers, primarily lung and bronchus, are another of the major cancers that we see each year in the United States. Last year, we treated only 27 of those lung cancers. There are 450 lung cancers each year in this region, and Diane Kelly will actually have some more data specific to, you know, the town of Greenwich. Colorectal and GI cancers are actually the most common cancer of any of the cancers, and last year, we treated 84 cases of colorectal or GI cancers, when there are over 450 of those cases in the region. So in my opinion, we are failing to fulfill the mission of Greenwich Hospital in terms of serving the healthcare needs of the resident of Greenwich by having inadequate and incomplete oncology services.
So what you're saying, in a nutshell, is 50% of all the Greenwich cancer patients are going elsewhere in total, but the breast cancer patients are mainly remaining here for treatment?
The majority are remaining here for treatment because of the outstanding reputation of Barbara Ward and Alyssa Gallego, the two surgeons who are treating those, and they're primarily in, you know, classification one and two, the lowest levels of aggressive cancer.
Okay, now, so you're saying it's the other types of cancers that are not being sufficiently addressed by Greenwich Hospital at this time, and so that that 50% number is made up, I'm just going to throw it out there, ballpark it, sounded like, for example, 80% of the urology or something like that.
Right.
Now, when I look at what you're going to be doing in your proposal, your proposal looks like it's going all breast in the new building.
The breast center will be on the, you know, potentially, on the third level. The entire second level is medical oncology and medical treatment. And so you see the terms of medical treatment we used?
Well, we were assuming that...
That's a combination of all the surgical subspecialties, thoracic, et cetera.
So the infusion area will be for everybody?
Right.
But you've got a whole third floor with the imaging and the surgery. I guess the radiation will also be, I'm just trying to understand how much, you have a need that's being met in town, primarily the resident need is being met, then you have a need that's not being met, but this description reads, this table reads breast cancer not as clearly indicative of addressing the unmet needs for the other cancers, which is where you're headed. So just for our clarification, what you're saying is there's a major unmet need in the other areas, but when you look at this, it doesn't jump out at you?
Okay.
I mean, it does on the floor plan.
That's helpful, okay.
And it didn't strike any of us.
Okay.
And yet, this morning, we were looking at the CDC cancer rates, et cetera, and breast cancer being the most frequent, I believe prostate was the second.
That's right.
And you're saying there's a major source of cancer, that, a major type of cancer that you are now going to be able to address, the second most in a better way?
Prostate, lung and bronchus, and GI cancers.
I just went to the second highest incidence.
Yeah.
So then the question is, yeah, so this doesn't make that clear?
Okay, thank you.
And so it didn't jump out at us how this facility was meeting an unmet need in town? That was the, if I was to recap, the biggest question we had yesterday, it would be, we don't want a regional facility. We want something that really is for our citizens, our residents. So it would be good if you could give us...
Thank you for that feedback.
And the second piece of that is, what happens to Benheim, that you don't call Benheim? And in my mind, it's always Benheim, but, so, because when you do this table, this is Benheim here?
Right.
You're adding this, what's your total and what's your ability to treat, and why is that meeting unmet needs in town? That was, I know I'm jumping you guys, but that was...
I had a question because I'm confused. You've used, you've used the term regional and town of Greenwich residents.
I did, I don't think he got there, did he?
No, he's used both of those terms, and I'm confused whether you are equating the two, because you cited percentages with regard to town residents and also said, talked about the region. So I'd like to understand the difference between the services that are being provided specifically to the residents of the town versus, quote, "the region," however that's defined.
Okay, so, you know, we have 63,000 residents in Greenwich. Nearly 40% seek their healthcare someplace other than Greenwich. So when I look at what the census, the number of patients that we would have in Greenwich Hospital, if we only provided care to Greenwich residents, we would be a 60-bed hospital, not a 206-bed hospital.
Okay.
And I outlined earlier the change in the number of hospitals from 35 to 25 and the consolidation, because quite honestly, a 60-bed hospital with 24-hour emergency services, 24-hour labor and delivery, inpatient units, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, would not be a viable entity. And then we would fail to fulfill the mission of serving the healthcare needs of the residents of Greenwich.
So you have 206 beds of, and you're bringing in people from out of town, other than OB, what would be the main attraction for non-residents at this time?
So overwhelmingly, the main attraction for non-residents is OB. 65% of our 2,700 deliveries are for people from Westchester, Rockland County, New Jersey, Brooklyn.
We tried to figure out how many babies are born in Greenwich every year and what is happening to our population, and we're like, none of these people live here.
2,700.
So that's how come we know.
Yeah.
What was the percent outside of Greenwich? 65%.
65% are outside the town of Greenwich.
Remember, we tried, we got, we got the birth registries in Greenwich and, yeah, okay, so 65%. So then, the huge portion of your non-resident use is OB.
That's right.
What would the rest of it be?
The rest of it winds up being a blend of medical, cardiac, some oncology. Yeah, we have a, now a...
Orthopedic would be huge.
Orthopedic is huge.
Okay.
Because, you know, ONS has offices in White Plains, Greenwich, and Stanford.
Exactly.
So, you know, they, you know, send inpatients to our facility. We do about 1,000 total joints per year, so that's a very substantial number. And Greenwich Hospital is, you know, really regarded nationally as one of the top hospitals in the country from a patient experience and satisfaction perspective. And that does lead to patient choice, because we as consumers have a choice of our physician, we also have a choice of the hospital where we seek our care. So we have that broad attraction in labor and birth because of that reputation and the experience that patients have. We're quite proud that our organization is in the 99th percentile of inpatient satisfaction in the Press Ganey surveys. We are, you know, at the top, and, you know, that is excellent. But what we're also trying to do is make the transition from being regarded as a wonderful place to have a baby to a place where you can get expert academic faculty-level services that better meet the healthcare needs of our residents. Each year today, 1,000 Greenwich residents are picked up by Greenwich Emergency Medical Services and deemed trauma, and they are brought to another hospital 6.6 miles away. And to me, that is our failure to provide the services necessary to meet the basic healthcare needs of Greenwich residents. Those 1,000 people should stay in Greenwich, not go to another hospital.
We're not a...
Yeah.
Why?
Well, because the state laws...
Just because, this is not my field.
Yeah, so the...
But what's wrong with going 6.6 miles?
Well...
Camford's a trauma center.
Going 6.6 miles? Well, you know, most people don't want to go to a facility other than their own, and they have to go because the way the state laws are, if you are deemed a trauma case, you have to go to a trauma center. You know, we can talk about, you know, that's a very provocative question, actually, you know, why is 6.6 miles?
I'm not meaning to be provocative, but it's just that I really didn't understand this.
Yeah, the state law is such that if you are deemed a trauma case, you have to go to a trauma center.
But you made, you made the comment that it's, that's unacceptable, and so we're trying to get at why that is potentially unacceptable. Do we need trauma centers every five or six miles?
Compared to all those services.
Well, there are only several in the state of Connecticut, and, you know, I believe that we need to become a trauma center, and we have initiated the steps to become designated as a Level III trauma center, because those patients don't necessarily need to go to another hospital. What does that say to the community? That says to the community that we are unable to provide basic surgical care in the event you have a broken leg or more serious trauma.
We're going to bring you back to the cancer center because we do have a capacity to go down rabbit holes, and I'm sorry we started that, but go ahead with where you were, you were at, who was going out of town and for what services, and where you thought we needed to fill essential in-town needs.
By the way, can I, I agree with the chair. Mr. Roth, I think I saw at one point, kind of like, this is Greenwich Hospital, this is where we're going to go, here's the kind of services we offer today, here's what we want to emphasize. You obviously came down to cancer in this particular case, right, and certain types of cancer. That would be helpful to the commission to have some of that, you don't have to provide it right, please don't provide it right now, and maybe one of your staff. But we always run into these where we go down rabbit holes and you go off, and they're all important people, this is a fascinating topic, but it'd be really helpful, I mean, you could see, I thought I saw some of this somewhere, where you talk about this and why, you know, the next logical step might be this cancer center, but there's probably other things, too, that you're looking at longer term. Am I right? Wasn't there some, yeah?
Yes, yeah.
And that kind of documentation would be very helpful, kind of as a base, so that we're not going down these rabbit holes at this point. So if, just as, it's kind of like the, when you hear other hearings, people say, I'll get back to you and give you all that data, we can't do it all right here, this is too crazy to do anything like that. But that would be wonderful, and I swear I saw it.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
Okay.
So I would just like to say that when you think about the 13 different types of cancers in terms of body parts, some liquid, called liquid, the blood-related cancers, and some solid, we do breast cancer essentially at Greenwich Hospital. We do not fulfill the mission to the town in any of the other surgical solid tumor masses. We do very little urologic, very little thoracic, very little GI, very little GYN oncology, no brain cancers at all, and that is a shortcoming and failure to fulfill our responsibility as a really superior healthcare facility serving the town.
And, go ahead, Dan.
I'd like to, not focus just on the data, but on the philosophy of, you know, a town of 62,000 needing, you know, what almost sounds like a regional facility where we can do everything for everybody in myriad of cancers. So sort of two, again, philosophical questions. For that patient who, right now, is going out of town for treatment, are we creating excess capacity within the healthcare system in a 50-mile radius that, you know, generally speaking, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense? Or are we putting somebody else out of business? You know, does a town of 62,000 sustain itself by, you know, treating all its residents when it's, you know, very typical in a small town, anywhere in the country, where you might go to Cleveland Clinic or Mayo Clinic? Here, we've got the sort of benefit of having enormously successful academic hospitals, and Yale New Haven being one of them. So take me through that dynamic.
You know, cancer care is extraordinarily complex, requiring numerous visits for chemotherapy, infusion, or... requiring numerous visits for chemotherapy infusion or radiation oncology. And to ask and have a family have to travel 50 miles each and every day, three times a week for 18 months, to New York City or to New Haven, Connecticut, just as a hardship on the family. Those patients who choose to stay in Greenwich, what they tell me is that a big part of their decision was having the local resources available, having, being close to their family, enabling their family to participate in the cancer care that they are receiving. And in the United States today, 80% of cancer care is local. It's provided locally. We're not putting anyone out of business. You know, we happen to live in a region that is not rural. There are, you know, several, you know, million people in the state of Connecticut, a million plus in Westchester, and eight or nine million in New York City. So there's, you know, plenty of care that's needed in the vicinity. And we need to do more to keep those 50%, almost 50% of Greenwich residents suffering from cancer to have to withstand the hardships of going out of town for that length of time.
But doesn't the capacity... In a 50-mile radius, will this create excess capacity? I mean, where will you draw the doctors to staff this facility?
So we will actually be able to, you know, because it will be Yale faculty providing full-time services in Greenwich. We'll, we actually had success doing this. We were able to recruit academic physicians from NYU, New York Presbyterian, and Mount Sinai, who live in Westchester, who have grown uncomfortable with a 90-minute commute. They want academics, they want research, they want access to clinical trials, and they want to be able to provide care. And we've recruited quite a few physicians, including our most recent recruit, a neurosurgeon who does life-saving thrombectomy work. We're the only hospital between New York City and New Haven who does that level of mechanical thrombectomy to manage stroke patients. Those are services, excuse me, that, you know, that we can provide, should provide in order to be a full-service hospital, not just a maternity hospital.
But doesn't the existing capacity already outstrip the demand locally in the town?
Outstrip the demand? Well, the local ability to provide the service is not being met by Greenwich Hospital. And, you know, you know, health care demand, you know, we can have the discussion about whether it's elastic or inelastic. I view health care demand as elastic. And consumers make very wise decisions about where to seek and get the best care possible. We want to be able to provide the Greenwich residents and those who live on the border of Greenwich, that very best cancer care that we can across the full spectrum of cancer diagnoses. We could not do that if we were merely, you know, a local, you know, Greenwich community hospital, but through our affiliation with Smilow Cancer Hospital, which, by the way, is 507,000 square feet compared to, you know, the preliminary proposals you're looking at, about 80. This is by no means a comprehensive cancer center similar to any of those.
But in order to provide a more expansive service, isn't the town of Greenwich having to be dependent upon a more regional base?
The reality is, we are dependent on that today already. You know, I think everyone here knows United Hospital closed in 2005. And they closed because they were unable to pay all of their expenses based on their demand. Many of those patients did move to Greenwich and are getting care at Greenwich Hospital. And that is part of the reason why we have remained viable and strong for the last 15 years, why our operating margin continues to be in the 3% range while still paying a net $28 million to the state of Connecticut. So, you know, health care is unlike any other, excuse the term, business in America. You know, the majority of the physicians, the 800 medical staff who practice at Greenwich Hospital, the majority of them are not employees of Greenwich Hospital. Many are independent practitioners, many are community physicians, some are employed by Northeast Medical Group or Yale University or large groups like WestMed and Westchester County. They determine who gets admitted along with their patients, what resources they use, and whether they choose to use our organization or not. So, you know, as much as I'd like to stand here and say that, you know, we should only be local, quite honestly, if we were only local, I would be concerned about our existence. And I know our overall viability is not this commission's concern, but it is mine.
But don't you run the risk of trying to be all things to all people in a community of 62,000 people? And having to broaden your outreach in order to provide sufficient demand in order to supply the level of care you're talking about?
So we actually believe strongly that the demand for these cancer services that we are addressing exists today. Our community just isn't unaware, and we have not been able to provide the state-of-the-art, advanced scientific care and clinical trials that would, you know, suggest to them that getting the best care is right here in Greenwich, not going to Manhattan. And, you know, that is something that I strongly believe. We will present the data if you would like to see the specifics about that. And, you know, we're talking about this as an outpatient facility. It is not an inpatient facility. And health care is quickly moving, you know, in the outpatient direction. At one point in time, you know, we had 28 inpatient oncology beds in Greenwich Hospital. Today, we have 14. Why? Because we're actually doing a better job treating cancer. There are 13 million people today living with cancer in this country. 25 years ago, that number was three. And so you say, wow, there's a lot more people with cancer.
It's being treated as a chronic disease as opposed to...
Exactly.
I understand that.
Go back and, you know, you said something interesting, kind of a different perspective. You said, you know, it's not our job to sort of be concerned about the livelihood of the hospital. And I think it's quite the opposite. I think this hospital, as we've said earlier, is one of the premier institutions in town. So I think, you know, everybody in Greenwich has an obligation to keep this hospital here. So I hope you...
Well, thank you.
I hope you do have that impression. Let me go back again to, and I hate to say the business aspect of this, but what has driven the decision-making to, you know, for the size of this facility? You know, how many doctors do you have to have to be able to demonstrate a distinctive competency that somebody else wouldn't be able to portray? And make this something that sustains itself? Again, it's not going to be just for the residents of Greenwich.
So the data regarding cancer is very powerful in this country. There are cancer registries that, you know, cross-fertilize the information. So, you know, we can speak with, you know, pretty good precision the numbers of cancers in each of these surgical areas that occur. If today we are seeing 10% or 5% of those, we can make some assumptions. And, you know, assumptions are risky. But you can say, you know, for urologic cancers, with the expertise that we bring in, we can treat 40%, and I'm making up a number right now. I think Diane is probably going to pull my collar in a minute and say... Because, and, you know, when we look at the demographics of where they live, where they choose to get their care, we can make those assumptions to build a case. And with Yale University full-time faculty practicing in Greenwich, we will have the very same level of expertise that exists at any of the New York or New Haven hospitals. I believe that that is a service requirement of Greenwich Hospital to meet the needs of Greenwich and the surrounding community.
And what does it take to create that, you know, again, I said distinctive competency? Does it take 10 doctors in a very narrowly-defined subset of cancers? Does it take 20? I mean, what really puts somebody on the map in terms of being a place where you would go?
So cancer care is also multidisciplinary. So one expert urologic surgical oncologist, working with a team of medical oncologists, radiation oncologists, the scientists, through a larger multidisciplinary team, is how you develop the reputation of providing outstanding cancer care. So we have many of those elements already through this Smilow Cancer Center relationship. What we don't have are the surgeons. So we are currently recruiting for one urologic surgical oncologist. He will be backed up by 27 surgical colleagues at Yale New Haven Hospital. So when one person is away, there will be someone covering. So, you know, the overall program in terms of determining the amount of square feet necessary to support the services is driven by the number of physicians and the estimated number of patients based on what we believe we will be able to attract and what the incidence of the disease is in the immediate area. So there's some science to it. And the current center, as I mentioned earlier, is only 25,000 feet, and it is 100% subscribed.
And do you cannibalize then from Yale, New Haven, the mother, the mothership? Or just, you know, if there's a finite and hopefully shrinking cancer population, you know, where will...
So actually, the cancer population continues to grow. And when we proposed the Smilow Cancer Hospital in 2007, the data demonstrated that there were thousands of Connecticut patients that left the state of Connecticut for their care. So Smilow Cancer Hospital in New Haven is recapturing many of those patients that would go north to Boston. And we have the opportunity to treat and care for many of the patients who are going to New York. We're not going to hurt anyone, you know, by, you know, building and expanding this program.
So did I understand correctly that you bring one urological surgeon down and that is sufficient to create a top-quality facility?
Yeah, that, you know, a top-quality urologic surgeon oncologist who does robotic prostatectomies and has done hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them along with bladder cancer and kidney cancer, backed up by the other surgical urologic oncologists in New Haven, is how you build a program. So one person is how we start. And, you know, we'll have perhaps several thoracic oncologists at some point. We're going to start with probably one or two and build a program, again, backed up from the main Yale faculty at Smilow Cancer Hospital. So you can start these programs.
Isn't, I mean, touching upon this point, isn't a critical measure of an institution's competence and reputation dependent upon the sheer volume of patients it sees in a particular area? And that's particularly true in a teaching hospital, which is why these, why these teaching hospitals and centers are where they are and why they enjoy the renown that they enjoy. And are we in the town of Greenwich in a position to establish that kind of volume base?
So we have the opportunity, because of the relationship with Yale New Haven Health, to take advantage of the reputation and the academic programs of Yale New Haven Hospital and Yale School of Medicine at Greenwich. So, you know, this program identified as Smilow Cancer Center, which has the same number of clinical trials as Memorial Sloan-Kettering and is advancing in the country's reputation, you know, field. So we will be able to take advantage of the reputation of Smilow Cancer Hospital for what we are developing in Greenwich. You know, Stanford Hospital has, you know, eight medical oncologists, but a weak surgical oncology, you know, program. Why? Because they're unable to attract academic-level physicians who have done hundreds and thousands of these cases. And, you know, without that, and they're not able to do enough cases. So the other advantage is, you know, if we need our prostatectomy surgeon to do 200 a year and we do only 100, he'll be able to, or she, who will be able to do 100 very easily at Yale New Haven to maintain that level of competence necessary to drive an outstanding program.
But will that practitioner who is a resident at Greenwich Hospital be doing that same level of volume to, or are you just, are we saying that he or she will have access to Yale and that will rub off? But the practice of the medicine that that person is doing is here.
Right. So in the short run, the answer is no. Because obviously, to build a program, it doesn't go from zero to 200 overnight. But, you know, it generally takes three to five years for a physician to build a reputation and a program to where they are fulfilling some of those volume needs that you just outlined.
And how do you accomplish sort of the peer review, which I understand is very important, to sort of policing the ranks and...
Absolutely.
Is that all just done system-wide within Yale New Haven?
So it is actually done locally and system-wide. So I said earlier, our board is fiduciary, our medical staff is independent. So our medical staff has self-governance rules where they perform their own peer review. So these Yale Medicine physicians will be medical staff members of Greenwich Hospital. So they will have to meet all the criteria established by the Greenwich Hospital chiefs of service and be subject to peer review. But also, being part of Smilow Cancer Center, they will also be part of that overall peer review of Smilow Cancer Hospital. I think I went a little longer than you intended to talk.
That was a great 10 minutes.
Can I ask one?
Yes.
I'll just go back to what I said earlier. It sounds like to me that you have a lot of data on, let's call it, the patient area, the regional. And I don't even include New York, I don't know, but whatever that regional...
Yes.
There's a lot of data on services that various providers provide. There's obviously data that you have. And I'm not concerned that you're not 100% Greenwich. I mean, I agree with you that you're going to have 60 beds, that's not going to work. We have a lot of benefit. But what we're really driving towards, can you show us the data? Then it says, listen, we looked at the area. These are the kinds of services that everybody provides in the area. These are the kind that are provided to Greenwich residents. And as a result of our decision-making, this is why we're doing cancer and these types of cancers. And these are our highest priorities. And that's very hard to verbalize because you go down all these little... But I'm sure that data exists out there. And that's, that's the need for Greenwich. And I think everybody has heard that it's not going to be 100% Greenwich people. I mean, that just doesn't work. The economics don't work. We get it. Happens in a lot of the institutions. So that data would be very helpful. And we're trying to keep this pre-application process at that level to say, wow, there's a need here. It may not be 100% Greenwich, but there's a need and we're going to benefit from that. And that would be so much easier to kind of get your hands around.
Okay, thank you.
MSK is in Westchester.
They are.
Long Island, New Jersey. Possibly a nanosecond from setting up shop at Stanford or here. That goes back to Mr. Hardeman's question about as the great cancer centers do satellites, would Yale, New Haven, how much would you really need? I'm struggling with, if those are going to be in place, what would we really need to offer in Greenwich? offer in Greenwich? Do we need 80,000 square feet? You're saying we're not going surplus capacity, but yesterday we entertained ourselves looking at how many satellites HSS has. And MSK is going the same direction. Is Stanford affiliated with Cornell while?
No, not.
They're not. They're just Stanford Health.
They're in the house, yeah.
So for them to partner with someone creates a very strong competitor. And then the question is, what does Greenwich need to have to meet the needs, again, the local needs? Do we really need, I get focused on the zoning in 80,000 square foot building. What do, it sounds like we need some more surgery. It sounds like we need some more infusion areas. You could go to an expert, you could come back here for your treatment once you're diagnosed. I believe that, a lot of people do that, right?
A lot of people seek second opinions, yes.
But you come back here, you can still get your infusions here, even if you've seen MSK or Cornell, right?
Yes.
So is that a path that gives us a smaller facility? Or do you not see that as, I'm just trying to get my mind around how big this is? Because it's triple the size of your existing cancer facility. So you're going to have, you're going to go from 25,000 to 100 and, no, 805,000.
Yeah, so the.
Because you're keeping Benheim.
Yes, but not in its current capacity and function. It'll largely be support for the cancer center. So the outpatient infusion pharmacy preparation center will be there. We're talking about some other outpatient, low number of physician, you know, practices going in there, some administrative support space. So largely, what, you know, is today, the Benheim Center will essentially will move across the street.
Okay, but you're going to have in total, you're still going to have 105,000 square feet of cancer support facilities?
Some of the current Cohen Pavilion space will not be cancer.
Okay. And then in Watson, you, well, you have your inpatient, right?
Right. Now, we have, you know, 70,000 square feet of outpatient space at 500 West Putnam. We have.
Well, that's right, of course, on Richard.
We have space at 55 Holly Hill, we have space in 15 Valley, we have space in 2015 West Main Street in Stanford, 260 Long Ridge Road in Stanford.
So that comes back to a question Mr. Yaski was asking. We don't have a grasp of what your total cancer treatment and diagnosis capabilities are. Because, right, 500 West Putt, you're doing diagnosis, you're.
Not cancer. There's, there's, there's nothing cancer there.
Colorectal? Oh, you're not doing the?
Well, there's screening for, yeah.
Okay. And once you screened, you diagnosed, right? Close enough? I'm, I'm no doctor, but.
Yeah, sometimes.
So, so you have screening. What, what's, what's the total capacity right now? Because then that 80,000 square feet isn't that big a number to be adding, you know, in terms of the total. And that's something that you were saying we needed to understand the whole picture.
Okay. It's the value of this discussion and dialogue, and we appreciate it.
Well, it's, I think you're getting a very, you're, you're hearing a struggle with it because our first reaction is, wow, this is really big. Our second reaction is, does the town, is this good for the town? Or maybe that was the first reaction, is it good for the town? And wow, this is really big, but it is. So those are the two. I think, as Dennis put it yesterday, the first two questions in your question list are the ones that we were stuck on. And then sort of the, yes.
And this does, I'm sure you can graphically depict this. And, yeah, I mean, that's what this purpose of this pre-application thing is. Okay, you got to show to us that kind of data and why it came down to this kind of facility. And then we're going to start dealing with, as part of that, the size of the facility. And then we deal with all the regulatory height requirements, bulk and all that. But I don't want to, we don't want to go there. We want to, we want to show. And I keep saying, I know this isn't 100% Greenwich, we don't expect it to be. So I know that was a little bit of a hang-up somewhere in there, but I'll just speak for me, not the commission.
No, and we do get, it's a very fair point to raise. Several people raised it yesterday, but also we hear it a lot from the public. There's been huge pushbacks, not to compare you to a car dealership.
This had better be good, that's all I can say. Our chair lady has a history of coming up, I'm going to give you a minute to think about that.
I came up with that.
She's, she's laid some zingers on people.
That's a good one.
It's, the pushback we get, straight face, is that it's a regional, it has become regional. And that people feel that it's regionally driven and doesn't serve local needs. And we get a huge explosion every time they want to add a service bay. Anybody who's done one of those applications can testify to how much we get pushback. And so we're being responsive to that as well.
True.
So.
Thanks, Norm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
I'd ask, I'd like to ask Diane Kelly to come up and go over some of the data. One of the things I did want to say, as much as people come from out of town to buy cars, it's not what drives them, not unintended, to live here. And things like the schools and amenities that this town has, and the hospital and healthcare is one of those things that, it's not what they come to see, it's what they come to benefit from.
We did say that yesterday, and I'll repeat it for everybody. We had realtors, as you know, research why people come to Greenwich. I think you heard about it, Mr. Roth. They come here for low property taxes, great schools, beautiful environment, and great services and amenities. The schools is part of that, but so is having a hospital. And we know that. We're just trying to get proportional.
Right. And I'd like Diane to touch on that, and then we can see where we're going to go from there.
The first thing, and thank you very much, and I promise to be brief. I don't think I can add much more than Norm, he did a great job with it. And you can tell we are very passionate about it, because we are passionate about healthcare. That just, we talked about that, that just kind of runs in our, in our blood. And I think most of us are, at the very end of the day. The only thing I wanted to correct and help you with this is this sheet that you have. And it was really interesting that, one of the things that I was, actually, we should have corrected before we gave you this, because we had a surgeon who gave me this correction and we didn't make it in the packet. You would think that I would have learned that from that mistake. So when you see, I have, it's page two of the executive summary, and it says Med-Ac Clinics. And it says we currently have eight exam rooms.
Right.
If, that really should say clinic space, and that's going to go to 24 exam rooms, those 16 are what are going to supply these specialty services, the thoracic surgeon, the GI surgeon. And it was really, I look at that and I think, oh, how did we miss this twice? Because you were much easier making this mistake when I had a surgeon looking at me and said, we are not medical oncologists.
So you're, what I was looking at was, you have three treatment spaces, you're adding six, and you're going to go, you're going to have nine, is not correct.
Yeah, so we'll, we will clarify that in our next.
Three, and you're adding three, and you're going to have six.
Yeah, so what we're actually doing for clinic space is we're going from eight exam rooms to 24 exam rooms.
Okay.
And you will see for breast, because you're absolutely correct, why would we, we are increasing our breasts, but it's only by four exam rooms to eight exam rooms.
Yeah.
And those additional four is because our hopes is that we can offer opportunities for people to stay closer to home for their treatment and their diagnosis with the stage three and four.
Got it.
Because we are losing the three and four.
None of us got that, we were all thinking.
Totally, it's the way it was presented, and we will correct that.
Column one plus column two equals, I'm missing column three.
You know, and, and the other thing I just want to say is that, you know, there's, I'm so pleased to hear about the importance of Greenwich Hospital and the health, you know, the hospital and its viability. Because there are two major services, that if you don't grow and you don't do well as a hospital, you won't do, you will not be, have a future state. And that is caring for cardiac care and oncology care. Those are the two biggest diagnoses that the nation faces and that we all face locally and nationally. And if we're not growing in those areas as a, as a healthcare system, you are, you will, you will face trouble. It's just a known entity. How do we build these things? How do we decide what are the things that go in? It's all based on the disease state of what's here in this region. So we will break it down in a table for you. I have some of the data here, but I think it will get confusing. I think it's better, I'll break it into a table, regionally, Greenwich, bigger region, how many people come from Greenwich with a Greenwich zip code, how many stay for their care, and how many leave? I can even pretty much tell you where they're going. So we, we can do that. No, just know you, we never get names, we just get numbers.
Oh, yeah, no, but what we're looking for is, why does this make sense for the town?
Yes, yeah. And why, why the size and why are the things? We base those priorities totally on disease state, not just things that would be interesting or the great surgeons that wanted to come here. It was about, what is the prevalence of disease state in this area? Meaning how many, how many colon cancers are we losing? How many urology, urological cancers, as Norm had said? It's really based on the disease. So I'm just going to quickly go through, what would, what would this building give us kind of in a conversational way that the Benheim is no, is not able to give us?
Can I just interrupt you just for a second?
Yes.
Because if you, the, I understand the, the practicality of understanding the environment and doing that, which makes a lot of sense, because you want to be successful. So, and, but the, there are, you know, New York is close by, and they have the, some of the best facilities in, I know I'm kind of repeating, but I just wanted to.
No, I, I, I do, yeah.
So Sloan-Kettering offers a lot, and other facilities in, close by. So do you need to be as good as they are? What, you know, one of the things we talked about before was, you're not, maybe you're not trying to be the best, and maybe you can't be the best, but you want to be useful and helpful and provide services. So I, I like the idea, and, but, but the thing that I've been hearing tonight is that you are competing to be the best. So I don't mind that, I just don't know how you get there, I don't know enough about it, and it's, but I understand that you have, you're expanding an existing medical environment from Yale. So you come with a certain expertise, and I assume that you're doing all those things there, and so you're just expanding them here, you're not starting anything new.
That's true.
But you're expanding them in a direction which is closer to other facilities which are more.
Stab.
Well, no, not more, no, no. You're, you're, you're expanding to a place which is closer to your competition. So, so there's, there's a bit of the rub. So we're just trying to kind of think about these things.
No, I, I appreciate what you're saying. And so one of the things that we think about when we do planning for healthcare is that if you're going to do the service, then you do have to, you do have to have the goal of providing the very best physicians that you can do and provide the best wraparound services. So we never would start something and say, we recognize we're not going to be so good at something. We won't take, we won't do that something. If we can't get a surgeon that has high volumes, great expertise, a lot of research, and great, great clinical trials behind them, that won't be part of the program. So we, we have, we do that kind of assessment in question. Now, as far as, you know, the proximity of people that are competitors, what we think about is that we are part of the Yale New Haven Health System in the Smilow Cancer Center. And their goal is to offer these services with the, with the science that backs them for great outcomes to the community of which we are in. That's just, that's part of our mission. You don't look to say, well, if we do this, we, because they, we really do believe, and I have to tell you, the American Cancer Society believes this, and Norm had also repeated this, healthcare is best locally. And so you're right, the proximity, we should probably, you know, you could argue, is, is it really close enough? But if you're getting treatment three or four times a day, I would argue, and this is your town, this is our town, we do have an ability to try to offer those services to the people in the town.
But that's the question with the MSK space, and, for example, in Harrison, their Westchester space, it reads online like it only does treatment.
Oh, you mean like infusion treatments?
They do infusion and immunotherapy.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you what it says.
Yeah. It must be just, yeah, infusions and that kind of thing.
So it's infusion and immunotherapy is what they say.
Yep.
So they have the center of expertise is in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And then you do your treatment local. Now, that is a model I think everyone's asking about here. Is that a potential? Because you're doing, you're looking to do more than that. Is it, what are the pros and cons of having a smaller facility here that focuses on treatment with, and remaining with the expertise elsewhere for the diagnosis?
So why don't we bring that back and do pros and cons? We'll just do a literally a pros and cons, because a lot of research has been done about that.
That would be.
About having access to your, you know, your, your diagnostic surgeon, if you will, while you're undergoing your treatment, which actually is a good segue into one of the things that we wanted to do in the new cancer center that we don't have the space for, is that cancer care now, in the last five or six years, has really been moved into an evolution of providing comprehensive multidisciplinary care teams. So there really isn't the support that you go ahead and you'll get diagnosed and you'll see your diagnostic doctor, and maybe in three weeks, you're going to see your surgeon who's going to do surgery. And then in four weeks, you're going to see your radiation oncologist, and then you may see your genetic oncologist. The best treatment centers right now are, all of those physicians are meeting together with you in the room, and your family in the room, and you are talking about your care plan all in one space. And hearing, well, okay, the surgeon will say, I, you know, I recommend this, well, how will that work for this? And we could do this. And it's called team approach. And the major, Smilow does do this up in New Haven, you need space and you need have access to these physicians, physicians to being in one place at a given time so that the patient can be at the center of the care. Now, after that treatment, multidisciplinary treatment, you go off and you do your treatments in the cancer center, having access to those, to those doctors coming to you, so you're not going to another building, another town, and another place every time, because, look, cancer care, as you know, it's not a smooth road. Things come up, things detour, things have to change. So one of the things that we would really want to do is have space. I know it's, you know, like, having space to have a multidisciplinary treatment team available to patients and their families where they are at the center of the care and they are not chasing the specialists. The specialists are around the table, coming up with a care plan and reevaluating that care plan. This space will also allow us to have access to a clinical trial protocols, where right now, phase one trials are sometimes people's only hope. You need to be part of an academic medical center to be part of phase one trials. And quite honestly, that takes space. That takes space for a physician to be on that site with a clinical trials nurse, to be monitoring you on a regular basis, whether you're getting your infusion, you're getting your radiation oncology, your radiation therapy, or you're checking in with your oncologist. To go to the same building and check in with your clinical trial person is essential to be part of a clinical trial. If you cannot do those things, you cannot be part of the trial. And for some people, the trial is the only hope they have. Right now, we would, we do not have the ability to do that. We really think that would be very helpful to people that want to be part of clinical trials, but they don't want to travel to wherever it is that they need to travel. The other thing, the new facility that we'll offer is the care team. So the care team isn't just the multidisciplinary team of physicians, which is essential, but once that part of the program is, you then become, you have a navigator, you have nurses, you have nutritional support, you have emotional support, you have financial counseling. Having all these people in your center where you can go and get these services while you're getting your other services, while you're, if you're in for your chemo, you're in for your, or you're just coming in for your psychosocial support services, it's proven that if they're in one place and the team is wrapped around you in one location, it makes a difference for people. it makes a difference for people. They're at their worst and their families are exhausted. They don't... They skip these other things because people just don't have it in them. But those things really do make a difference. Having spiritual support and counseling in that building. So, that would be a big benefit. So, also, and then we doubling the infusion treatments. We talked about that. And then, the having radiation oncology in the building. Obviously, we have that at the Benheim. But again, only really treating breast cancer. You know, expanding those modalities to expand other treatments. And what this isn't, and I do think Norm talked about this, but this is not an inpatient stay. This is a business hour facility. This is Monday through Friday. This is whatever business hours are. I think it's like seven to five for us, but maybe seven to 6:30. But we also are doing a renovation to our oncology inpatient unit to kind of make sure that we're all doing the same branding. We're all make sure that, you know, we're really keeping everything state of the art with oncology. So, the 14... We are having a 14-bed oncology inpatient unit. So, when things can't be managed in the outpatient, we are able to manage them inpatient with the same level of providers, being able to come over to the cancer, you know, the inpatient to see the patient when they're in their inpatient stay and then get them to the outpatient. So, with that, I will just kind of wrap that up.
One last question.
Yes.
Telemedicine.
You know, telemedicine at this point in time, where we are thinking of that would be helpful is more not phase one for the patients, but phase one to have the doctors doing the cancer conferences that you talked about with peer review. And cancer conferences are extremely important in making sure that physicians are doing their diagnostic and they have like a peer review check. So, we will make it available to our patients because we have it now. So, I wouldn't rule it out, but...
But as the CDC said tonight, that we should all be finding access to telemedicine.
Yeah. Because you can't catch anything over the screen.
Yeah, we're going to do FaceTime for the next meeting.
May I ask a question too?
Diane, don't go away.
Diane, so just so we're on the same wavelength.
Yes.
So, you've got a lot of data on the market, the patient area. You're breaking it down by service. Okay, that's core. This pro and con thing is fascinating. If you could provide as much detail there, because that can make a huge difference because we're not medical professionals. But I think we do get when you say you have to have a team of surgeons. You have to have a team of practitioners. But it's just not there. You have to have the care. And those ancillary... I call them ancillary, but those are very, very...
Essential.
Let me ask you another question. Mr. Roth said that you have a lot of satisfaction surveys or something like that on your services. Because one of the questions we get is, is this the best? I'd assume it would be the best. But if you can do it not only for your hospital, but this area around here, who's really... Who's providing the best kinds of services? Because one of our concerns is you've already got a lot of competitors in this area. And I have no idea whether you do or do not. But I'd like to see whatever data you might have on satisfactions.
Oh, we'd be more than happy to give you that.
Well, summarize it, please, because we...
Absolutely. Not the ladies who are eating lobster, okay?
No, no, no. We have a rigorous patient experience and it's actually a government tool that nobody can alter.
Right. But I'm more interested in the services you offer now there. I mean, because of the assumption there is you're going to do the same kind of thing on this cancer and that's what...
And we break it down by oncology. And I can give you patient experience scores by oncology.
Mr. Hegney will provide a valuable service to you to tell that if you can bury us in data, that's not going to help you. So, if you can summarize up, that would be very helpful.
I'm happy to summarize it.
So, I think one thing, Marguerite, also, since this is a two-way communication, you know, this from just a real estate perspective is an elephant. And I just encourage you, as you think internally, about what your priorities are. If, you know, the commission would say, "Okay, 80,000 feet is too much. 60,000 feet is too much." I mean, and I hope this back and forth continues for your benefit as well as ours.
I was going to echo that comment. I was thinking...
You can spend a lifetime in pre-application hearings.
And I'm thinking that we need to continue this one in particular.
Yeah.
I was going to have our architect go through the concept plans. But I think we need to come back to you...
With more numbers.
With more information and go over the questions and comments that you had. This has been extremely helpful. I would encourage you to continue to do things like this. And we would like to come back to you next month with the information, with answers to the questions and be able to provide you with the answers that you've been seeking. And if the answers aren't there, maybe this isn't the right thing to do. But we believe that it is and we believe we can provide that to you. So, let's... Rather than talking about plans and things, let's continue on those first two questions and come back to you. One of the next meetings next.
Okay.
Mr. Hegney, I have a question for Mr. Roth, just real quickly.
Any other...
If it is for this project, is this coming from the Board of Greenwich Hospital? Or is this coming from the New Haven Health System?
So, this project was recommended and endorsed by the Greenwich Board of Trustees. Then, we presented it to the Yale-New Haven Health System Board. And based on the strong position of the Greenwich Trustees, it was approved by the Health System Board. The funding for it is actually going to come from the Yale-New Haven Health System to actually pay for the building.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is it going to be named Smilow Two or something?
It will have a Smilow name, yeah.
Baby Smilow.
So, thank you for this time and for all of your comments. And we'll come back to you next month.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hegney.
Excellent.
I don't know. Were you going to ask for any public comment at this time?
Are we allowed to?
Oh, does anybody from the public wish to speak while we're here? Anybody have any... Well, that's disappointing.
Well, I don't think the public knows.
That's not necessarily the case.
Well, this is a first or second. So, the public may not be aware they could do that.
Yeah, it was very small done. Pre-application process, we did send out...
Notices.
Notices to all the abutting property owners. And we'll continue to reach out to them and have dialogue.
Yeah, because it would be really good if this could turn into a bit of a town dialogue as well. Because if the town is clear that there's a desire for stronger cancer treatment in town, that's a pretty good indication that we should try to accommodate the scope.
So, Norm has a meeting next week with the District Seven RTM. He's reached out to other, the neighborhood associations. So, no, we're continuing to have that dialogue with the general public as we are with you.
Yeah. Okay.
And any other suggestions you would have on that?
Yeah, just still chewing on everything. So, we'll send you in things as we think about them, I think.
Our ears are open.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney. We need a break? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen. I have a request for a break.
Was it unanimous?
What? It's only 9:20? You want a break? Is that... Was that a request or not? That was a request, okay. Like a five-minute break. We reconvene at 9:26. That never happens. I don't know why I even bother saying it.
You can eat grapes or fries.
That's very good. I think it's wonderful to get in at this table. You're kind of hostile, but you don't really mean that.
We weren't hostile. I didn't think we were hostile.
But I'm good at hostile.
I didn't think we were hostile.
Now, we got two quotes under that. One, we ought to just call ourselves the leaders. And two, we're good at hostile.
I didn't think we were hostile.
Oh, you gotta...
She went to a doctor. And she's right, went to Cornell. Never would have gone to Cornell.
We have an expert here.
You know, never would have gone to Cornell had it happened. So, saying MSK is neither kind of their role, you know? And I was telling you, the entire reason I went to Yale was because at that point, I took her.
You didn't want to go to the city.
And there was absolutely no desire to go to the city.
See, and Peter doesn't think it's that bad to go to the city, but you...
To me, it was. I was like, I can't, I'm not hostile from that. And at that point, it didn't really matter because...
And I remember when you were supposed to... And I remember a day when you were supposed to go to the city when...
He couldn't make it.
He couldn't make it. He just said, "I can't do that."
Yeah.
"I can't do that trip."
They got us... Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's like brutal.
So, you don't go to the city. I can tell you briefly, I went to Greenwich twelve years ago. And they looked at one thing like prostate. They didn't look at the bladder. I had prostate and bladder cancer at the same time. I went to Sloan. They took care of the bladder without digging it out. And they got rid of the prostate.
Right. In other words, you have to go to the right, yeah.
And they did that out of... It's what I had. It is six times a week.
Right. Yeah, you go to where the top doctors are.
You go where the top doctors are. So, the question is, but then you guys did the infusion here. If you could tell a...
But not the chemo stuff. We did the reds. We did the red stuff.
But you could have done...
But they wouldn't let us do any of the chemo down here.
But see, the... But that's stupid. And so, if they had let you do all the treatment here...
I kept asking, "Why can't you just do it down there?"
See, that's what I'm... That's what I'm pushing for, is that we just... We could do treatment here.
Right.
Like all of you...
Well, that's what I think he's saying, that all of the chemo and everything would be down there.
But still for diagnosis, you might go to Mayo.
Right, you might go...
You might go to Cleveland Clinic.
I mean, honestly, I went to Cornell. I went to talk to people who have known Sinai. I sent records to... I sent records to all of the top doctors in this area.
Yeah.
Because that's what you do. You don't need to donate.
That's what you do. So, that's what you do. So, the thing is...
Then you figure out, okay, you make sure that you're right, that you're, you know, your right side, the direction's right or whatever. And then, you just go, "Okay, well, who's the most convenient?"
But that's what we're asking them tonight.
You know, because at that point...
Is we're not going to stop going to MSK for diagnosis. Now, if then, somebody would give you the treatment protocol, you would happily stay here. But you're still going to go to San Francisco or Houston or wherever.
But interestingly, I spoke to a guy who ran that MD thing on the internet, whatever that thing is called, WebMD or something. And he has leukemia and he survived. And he said that... So, I got hooked up with him to have a chat about it. And he said he always recommends that people go and move, literally, move to where the top leukemia doctors are or whatever. And he goes, "No one has yet taken me up on that. I always recommend that they do that." And the point being, people don't do that. You know, and it's difficult. Right. And how was that even going to work?
I mean, because by the time we found out you've got someone who's sick...
Right.
They're not going to get on an airplane and travel eight hours and check into a hotel and rent a... I mean, you know, you're not going to do that. You're super sick.
Yeah.
Which is where telemedicine comes in. Because you could have full diagnosis remotely by the world's expert.
Yeah.
And he gives you the treatment protocol. Why not do that?
Right.
And they're like, "No, no."
That's the other thing difference between here and the door. When they looked at me, they looked from here down. They checked everything, just not the bladder, not the prostate. They checked everything.
Well, she's saying that that's what they need to do.
Because... And there were like seven doctors all in the same room doing all... They do all kinds of different things, but they're all together. And they wish out of the way.
Look at you.
You find out fast what's right and what's wrong.
And you're here.
And I'm still... And I got 10 more years, he told me. Then, I'm going to get something else out. I said, "Good." Dr. Guido Dubagni. Guido Dubagni, he heads up the Cancer Bladder Center for Sloan. And he's kind of a kook, but he never smiles.
They're all kooks.
But he says, "I will find something in 10 years. I've got everything. You won't have any trouble for at least eight. And you're going to start feeling things again like you did this time. And you'll come." And he said, "I'll get another piece out of you." I said, "Good." And then, do I get 10 more years after that? He said, "I'll give you 10 more years." I said, "That would make me... I'm just kind of..."
I'm good. I have nuts here.
No good for you. Those things are good.
Did you see the New York Times thing over Christmas, New Year's timeframe? About seven days of lecture on sugar.
Oh, my God.
He said, "Peel your grapes. All the sugar is in the skin."
Really? I didn't know that.
I mentioned that to...
So, how you doing?
I mentioned that to Tomo. And he says, "Oh, yeah, in Japan, we peel our grapes."
Only a Japanese...
That's from Shakespeare. Peel me a grape.
Yeah, only a Japanese would peel a grape. I mean, look at the other stuff that they do with...
My grandmother used to peel grapes. My father was dying. She would peel the grapes.
Oh, because he didn't like the skin. I know, I'm not...
She'd think that was the more elegant thing.
Do you oatmeal for breakfast? Yeah, I just had a feeling. Just I've been watching your diet and I was like, "Oh, it's good."
I have oatmeal too, but it's a little different from Dave's.
Yeah, no.
Mine has maple syrup in it.
Yeah.
Dave doesn't even walk past the maple syrup.
Okay, we ready?
Yeah, let's go.
We have a chance. We have a chance to...
I'm here.
What do you think the timing is?
Katie? You want to give Peter Lowe an estimate? I will not do that.
Sorry?
A time estimate.
I'm just desperately trying to do 10 or 15.
Okey-dokey.
I think we could do it.
Do you ever feel picked on?
Only when you deserve it.
I feel picked on.
Speaking of you, Dennis.
That was a good setup.
Oh, thanks.
Who said only because you deserve it?
Peter.
Thank you. I think he gave you the grape because you deserve it. Okay, so now we're beginning the public hearing. This is Greenwich Academy for a final site plan and special permit for Phase Two of GA's master plan on the main campus. Mr. Collins?
Evening, Ms. Allen, members of the commission. I'm Bruce Collins, and I represent Greenwich Academy. And we're here before you tonight to seek approval of, as you say, Phase Two of their, what is their master plan? This is the last phase of the plans that they presented to you about a year ago, at the time that the commission reviewed and approved the new lower school and other campus site plan improvements and building improvements as well. You remember, at that time, we, at your request, we presented to the commission the school's master plan that had been done some time ago in terms of their long-range proposals for campus improvement to meet the needs of their educational missions. Oh my God. And that is a copy of the plan that was presented to you at that time. And as a part of that, this is the tricky one. No, I can do this. As a part of that plan, yes, here we are. We were proposing, at the point that I am shakily showing you, a new visual arts center to be built at that point in the campus. Tonight's application relates not to that building because it was determined after review with the school's architects that, in addition to the existing Performing Arts Building immediately adjacent, would serve the purpose in a better way. So what's before you tonight in terms of building is the demolition of this portion of the Performing Arts Center and elimination of that, but the addition of facilities to the Performing Arts Building. So it now will be a combined performing and visual arts center. The other part of the application that we're bringing to you tonight is, relates to the Harrison Courtyard, which is this area that is not very well-used because it's not very inviting. It's surrounded by campus buildings, the upper school, the middle school, Ruth West Campbell, and Young Hall. And the proposal is to come to you tonight with new landscape elements for that, to make it an outdoor learning area for the kids, in addition of a small eating area, and a generally more attractive and usable area. With me tonight to talk a little bit about the need for these improved facilities are Molly King, who's the head of GA, and Frank Crane from Giselfe Associates Architects for the project, who'll tell you a little bit about the building and how it's planned. There are two open items that I wanted to bring to your attention immediately. One has to do with the fact that although ARC has reviewed this, generally liked the proposal, has had some comments relating to the design, which we consider to be minor. The plans before you tonight incorporate those changes, and we are scheduled to go back to ARC on March 4th. And the other one has to do, the other comment has to do with comments from Rich Femenella at the Sewer Division, pointing out that we've got to provide some information to him, and of course, do whatever he needs for us to get a sewer permit, and we shall. We have provided information to him, but not in enough time to give him time to respond. So if the commission would like to see, to approve this tonight, we understand that it would, we would certainly accept those conditions.
Well, you're missing the stuff for the CEO as well, right?
We understand what he has commented, and we can satisfy that.
Right.
We will.
I believe the comment was prior to building permit.
Yeah. If, I don't know if you heard that, Ms. Allen, but that comment had to do with prior to...
Well, yes, and, okay, for the following, okay.
But in any event, there's no zoning issue. We can resolve his comments. So I may like to introduce Molly King.
Thank you, Bruce, and good evening. I'm Molly King, head of school at Greenwich Academy. And as Bruce mentioned, about a year ago, we shared the highlights of our campus master plan that was conducted in 2017 and 2018 by Sasaki Associates out of Boston. That included building new spaces, renovating existing spaces, and a robust approach to enhancing outdoor spaces, all to improve the educational experience of our students and faculty. We presented plans specific to Phase One, those were approved and are now underway. And as Bruce mentioned, we listened to feedback on that process, both to incorporate it into current construction and mindful of the design and approval of Phase Two, which we're presenting to you. Specifically, the original campus master plan, as you saw, called for a standalone visual arts center, but mindful of the feedback to optimize parking and traffic flow and minimize the possibility of disruption to the current viewscape. Tonight's plan includes a visual and performing arts addition to the existing Wallace Performing Arts Center. We believe this not only incorporates feedback we have heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but addresses our programmatic priorities, including a new dance studio with a sprung floor, essential to any contemporary and leading dance program. This will replace our current dance studio, which is terribly outdated. New visual arts studios that bring in natural light and flexible use for multiple programmatic needs. Importantly, this also means that we open up space in the current upper school building, that's the SOM building, allowing us to convert current visual arts classrooms to much-needed STEM labs within the existing upper school footprint and overall floor plan. Community is critical to Greenwich Academy, and building a new entrance to the performing and visual arts center that is welcoming as a gathering space will be transformative for us. And to enhance community and security, the significant expansion of the current upper school courtyard, the Harrison Courtyard, which is, I think a number of you have seen it, deep, dark, and dank, will support existing pedestrian patterns, allow for an interior gathering space to reinforce relationships between the divisions, lower, middle, and upper school. And given its interior orientation, will keep our students safer, more contained, and easier to supervise. Finally, our handicapped access is currently cumbersome and inadequate, given all the grade changes, and this new courtyard will be transformational and give every community member access to each other and to every physical space on campus within these buildings. We're really excited about all the ways our proposed Phase Two can help Greenwich Academy achieve our goals as a school and as a key institution in the Greenwich community for almost 200 years. I'd like to now introduce Frank Crane from Giselfe Associates. He will give greater detail around the design, including the incorporation of feedback from the architectural review committees that we've attended already. Thanks so much, Frank.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Crane. I am a partner, an architect, and a landscape architect with Peter Giselfe Associates. Also with me is Chris Tramutola, who's also an architect and landscape architect. I was going to take you through the building and site work of the Visual Arts Center. Chris is going to talk to the Harrison renovation project that we're also proposing. As Bruce had mentioned, we did meet with the ARC back in November for a preliminary conceptual design submission, just to ensure that the trek that we were doing with the design was not going to be any issues. We took the information and the comments that we received in November, incorporated those into the design, met with them in early January, and they had several other comments, particularly with the extent of site work that we were looking at for the Visual Arts Center. They were asking if we could possibly expand it to make the campus better. The other is the treatment of the architecture of the proposed lobby. And they also looked to us to see if we could improve the accessibility to all of the spaces at the Harrison Courtyard, which has a 22-foot elevation change from the east to the west. So here we have just a image of the aerial campus, showing in yellow at the right-hand side of the slide, the location of the current lower school under construction. The central area in red is showing the Harrison Courtyard. And then to the south, you can see the expanded area that we were looking at for the Visual Arts Center, as well as the expanded campus site work. This is just a figure ground map of the campus, showing the linear quality of the campus with its various configured buildings. And we were looking at this just from the topography where Ruth West Campbell is, that's at the top of the hill, that it gently slopes down to North Maple, and then aggressively slopes to the west towards the playing fields. And this is a campus concept diagram, which we had shown to the ARC initially, where we noticed on the campus, where you see those circles of green, they were the outdoor rooms that the campus depends on for their outdoor educational programs and socialization of all the students when they're at school and on campus. On the north side, you can see the outdoor room, which is created by the new lower school, the central area, which is the Harrison Courtyard, which we're renovating. And we looked at the possibility, rather than creating a standalone building, would it be a better solution to have an addition to the performing arts, so that we could have, create synergies between performing arts as well as visual arts while creating another outdoor room? And each of these rooms would be connected by pedestrian paths. Now, when we met with the ARC on 1-8, they had suggested, would it be possible if we could expand the site work along the eastern edge at the south side of the campus, so that the outdoor room would actually become the pedestrian link? So that the campus would be transformed with all of this site work. We explained that this was outside of our scope of work, but after speaking with the school, they saw the benefit of possibly doing this and really creating a much better campus.
Very cool idea.
Yeah, it is. So this is just a slide showing the existing site plan, showing the, if you look on the left-hand side of that slide, you'll see the dance studio and the, if I, will it show up on the back, or do I have to go here?
Yeah, it has to go back.
Okay. So here you have the dance studio and the coral building and the existing site work. When we had gone to the ARC with the 1-8 diagram, this was a L-shaped, configure eight, sorry, apologize. It was an L-shaped configuration with a straight wall along the east facade of the building, and we were only concentrating on the site work, creating the outdoor room adjacent to the Visual Arts Center, as well as the redo of Harrison Courtyard. So when we went back on the eighth, we developed the design of the building, where the building design slightly shifted to the north, so we could break up the scale of the new addition. So that when you face it from the east, you would see each of the various pavilions for housing art studios, as well as the main lobby, which is at the south. And we created this very large quad, which within it, you have a destination of that courtyard, which is outside the Visual Arts Center. So now the quad acts as the pedestrian link to the new Harrison Courtyard. And Chris will speak more about the improved design of the Harrison Courtyard and the accessibility and more organic shapes that came out of that. Here you can see the existing outline of the entry drive and the parking, which we had to deal with. In doing this shape, the reason, one of the reasons why we decided to do an addition versus a standalone was the impact of parking. We basically created a design that allowed more green space at the south end of the campus to create a destination for the students and staff. We ended up creating a new lobby, which celebrated the performing arts, as well as acts as the lobby for the visual arts. And we created a new reconfigured parking, which had a net zero loss of spaces. So in doing that, it solved all of the issues that the school was looking at and created a better life for the campus with the shaping of this building. This is just the red line showing here, this is the area that was added as part of that 1-8 ARC meeting to create that longer quad, so that it tied the entire campus together. This is just the original bird's eye perspective of the Visual Arts Center here with its green quad in front of it, and this is the new rendition...
Go back a sec, go back. Okay.
So this here, that's the Visual Arts Center, attached to the Performing Arts Center. Here is that green space immediately adjacent to it, and then the existing upper school pedestrian paths remain as is. Then when you do the new design...
So there's...
The design stays the same, the Visual Arts Center.
Yeah.
But the quad has grown all the way from Ruth West Campbell to the south facade of the new Visual Arts Center.
Yeah, it looks like the circle is less planted in the new.
Well, the circle...
There.
Yes. This is an older image, it's a Google image that we have.
Oh, okay.
So...
So you're gonna plant, yeah.
They have lost a beach, it declined and it had to be taken down.
But it's gonna get...
It's getting replanted, so that we're planting that circle, so when there's a rival to the school...
I'm sure the landscape people on ARC will press for...
Yes. What we've shown is that we are, I believe, we have tripled the amount of trees going back of what is being removed. This is just a view in that quad, looking to the south, where you have the new Visual Arts Center art studio here, the new lobby at the south end. This was just the concept.
Can you go back to that? Do you mind just quickly, I don't wanna make everybody go down the rabbit hole, but ARC made some comments to you about the material blend, the blend of materials on this. Is this revised and what changed in that?
I was go, I have elevations to show you exactly that progression.
All right.
So it was just, this was just the concept diagram for the building. Basically, it's three wings connected by a transparent connector, which is abutting the Performing Arts Center, so that the south wing acts as the new lobby for the Visual Arts Center, as well as the Performing Arts Center. It also widens that space, which is currently 25 feet wide, up to 60 feet wide, so that we celebrate the arrival of coming to a performance. These are just plans, which I won't go through in detail. The lower level, which houses some of the art studios, the main floor, which has the lobby, dance studio, which is being removed and put into the Visual Arts Building, as well as film study. And then on the second floor, we have two large art studios and a double-height lobby at the south end. And this is just an image of the interior of the art studio facing north, back out toward Ruth West Campbell. So we have these gently sloping roofs, so we're picking up the motif of the SOM building, and we're also getting these cathedral ceilings inside the art studios, so it makes it more of an art studio feel. And this is just the roof plan, showing the new addition attached to the Performing Arts Center, the flat roof of the lobby reminiscent of the flat roofs of the Performing Arts Center. And then as we move north, we have these gently sloping roofs of the art studios. This is what the progression has come from the ARC. The top elevation is the original elevation that we had shown during our conceptual design, which had a layering of materials. We had a stone base, trying to pick up the stone of Ruth West Campbell. And then we had brick in the center, and we had a higher second story. What they came to us and said, we would like you to consider reducing the number of materials and removing the stone. So what, and we would also like you to reduce the height of the building. The proportions of the building seem somewhat strange. So what we did is the following. We took the east elevation, we added brick to the bottom, and we connected the first floor windows, or the lower floor windows, the basement windows, and the first floor, to make the base of the building appear taller, even though it's two stories. And we reduced the height of the upper studios by two feet, still giving us very high studios. That also helped in the proportions of the building, making a taller base and a smaller upper story. And they seemed quite pleased with these changes that we were proposing. And on the north elevation...
It's a little bit like a train station.
It had the same issue, which it had stone, brick, the higher top. We combined those two, and we lowered the story on the upper level, so that it became more proportioned as we faced the north of the building. The one issue they did have at the 1-8 meeting is they asked that we look at the lobby, which has 16-inch masonry piers and window glass that's mirroring the window glass of the connector on the west facade. And they asked that, could we make it wider, so that it would pick up the motif of the piers that were in the north, the east, and the north elevation? So what we did is, in this rendering here, you can see the 16-inch piers are now widened out to 2'8". And we have the glass in between it, so that we could still feel that that's a double-height space for the lobby. We're just trying to marry the masonry of the two studio buildings, along with the transparent connector of the corridor. So this was the elevations we had shown them, which they liked. This here is the east elevation, which we had seen, the north elevation. This is the west elevation, which is that transparent connector, the north pavilion here for the art studios, the south containing the double-height lobby. What we've done now is changed the facade of the lobby, which is 16-inch piers, and we went to thicker piers, picking up the pier motif on the east and the north. And we've taken the mullein patterns and brought those into the lobby, so that we're weaving the two, the transparent mullein pattern, as well as the brick pier motif, so that all three wings are talking to each other. So it's a common fabric. And this is just, again, the overall view of that building with its new quad. And if there are no other questions, I was going to... And if there are no other questions, I was going to have Chris talk about the Harrison Courtyard.
Anybody have questions, comments? Nope, okay.
Let's get through the whole thing first.
Okay. It's not like us to do that.
Thank you.
No, we don't learn.
Good evening. My name is Chris Tremontola, I'm a landscape architect. I'm going to review the Harrison Courtyard here, or also known as the Upper School Courtyard. At the right side of the slide, you saw the previous, on one of the previous slides, you saw the existing courtyard, which was a very rectangular scheme. It's very underutilized, it creates three different spaces with no ADA access between them at the moment. And it was very heavily planted with birch trees, river birch trees, which have very dense foliage, creating a very shaded and underutilized space. So when we first went to the A R C and when we were working through the design, we came up with a series of plazas and usable spaces within the courtyard. The original design was a more angular design, and as it evolved through interaction with the client, we came up with more organic shapes, which you'd see here. This creates a series of plazas for the cafeteria at the top level, outside the Maker Space at the mid-level, and outside the library at the lowest level. The two intermediate, or the three intermediate spaces that are the perfect circles within the design is a pedestrian link that you travel through, no matter which direction you're going to or from within this space, you travel through this link, which we see as a social hub, a small amphitheater that can hold roughly two classes of students for outdoor learning, and a larger multi-use space here, which can host small outdoor games and larger social gatherings. When we interacted with the A R C, we had roughly the same, actually a slightly improved ADA access for what is existing, and they asked that we do our best to increase the ADA access to get to every space in the courtyard. So when we searched through, crunched all the numbers, what we were able to do is provide ADA access to every level, and access between levels from the intermediate space, which this goes to the lower school, down to the lowest level. How that happens is, at this level, you'd go down a ramp here, which integrates into this space along that curve. You'd get to a landing here at the stair, and then you'd go on the curve here, and down another ramp to the bottom. That allows access to the amphitheater and the multi-use space from below and from the intermediate level. Additionally, the link here is also accessible from this intermediate level as well, so 100% of the spaces are accessible. The cafeteria, which is at an even higher level than the main space here, is accessible through a ramp that comes through the back here to get to the cafeteria and the plaza dining area. We performed a couple sections to understand how these, all these different levels are working, which will shed some light. The first one will be the A section that runs east-west, from the library here to the Ruth West Campbell Hall. So you can see here, this runs, as you exit the library, you'd be at the lower plaza, which could be used for studying or gathering, and a short series of walls, of stone walls and planting area gets you up to the amphitheater, and then you have all the amphitheater seats here that would provide seating for anywhere between 60 to 80 students at its maximum, but most likely it would be a single class. Additionally, the amphitheater circle in plan is right on axis with the portico here, the little balcony of Ruth West Campbell Hall, which integrally connects that space to the courtyard, as well as when you're standing at this space here along the railing, you'll actually be able to see down into the amphitheater, so you're in the space. The north-south section looks to that view there, connecting from Ruth Quest Campbell Hall to the amphitheater, and shows the, how large the multi-use space is here, and how the different levels, this is the intermediate level, this is the cafeteria plaza level, and down here, this is the main level where you enter from the rest of campus. This was the, this was the final plan that we are now submitting to A R C, which integrates all of their comments that they had provided us last time. And this is a three-dimensional rendering that shows how all of this would work. Again, this is not only a presentation tool, but this is a learning tool for us to understand where each intricate point of this design works and where we can improve on it.
Help me for a second, I was only there once. This is like a hole in the ground now, right?
Yes.
And you've filled in all this, this is all being brought in and you're-
There is, there is a mix of cut and fill. The net will likely be filled-
Right.
But it's not just fill, there's actually a good amount of cut, it won't be a tremendous amount of fill.
And so you're cutting like moving back to the back of Ruth West Campbell, is that what you're doing? Like you're kind of moving that space back, so that you can make the elevation work?
Yeah, so a portion, if we go back here, there's a retaining wall-
Oh yeah, I see, I see, okay.
That goes right here at the moment-
Right.
That's 22 feet tall.
So that's, right.
This portion will be cut right there, and then this portion would be fill. And then over here, this would be cut, and this would be fill. So I'm not gonna say it's totally balanced, but it's, there is a portion of both to integrate that into the site.
I wasn't concerned about the amount of fill, I was just trying to remember the space, and we walked by and it was like a hole in the ground, and there was nothing down there, and now you're building it up, I don't mind if you fill the whole thing, but I, that wasn't my question, my question, I was trying to remember the space and-
Yes. It's currently, this section here is a dead end, where there's nowhere-
Yeah.
You wouldn't go in there really for any reason at the moment.
Very nice.
Could you go through the day and students going back and forth through this, there's classes that people have to get to, going from the lower school to the physical education area and that kind of stuff. So what kind of numbers are we talking about? How wide is the access back and forth?
I think it would be best to address that.
So one of the things that we did in the Sasaki campus plan that was, we'd never seen before in other campus plans that we had done, they had the entire community, including all of the girls, do this survey, where you were dragging the mouse as to what your day looked like, and then gave us that feedback. And this, literally that circular spot, kind of that meeting point, that really is the central spot for lower school, you're absolutely right, that for lower and middle school, they're heading over to physical education, they're heading to the Performing Arts Building, so they're moving through all of these spaces, and yet it's so narrow, it's so steep, it's dark, that there really isn't a direct route. In terrible weather, we'll send them through the middle school and upper school, because we don't want them going down those really steep stairs to that really deep hole, or they're going up the steep stairs by the Maker Space and up by the cafeteria, but it's not, it's not direct. And so what we learned from that Sasaki feedback is this, this really is kind of that grand central intersection, and now what this will do is not only make it much more accessible by basically blowing it wide open, but it makes it inviting. As our head of upper school said, "We want this to be a destination, not just an unpleasant journey." I mean, we really want this to be, you know, this interior hub that is the community builder and practically speaking, supporting all of this pedestrian traffic.
So this is your quad, and you're organizing it.
Hold on.
This is your quad and you're organizing it. So in a quad, you know, you have, you don't put down the walkways until you see how everybody's walking. So, and so you've done that, you've created that kind of space, and it allows for people to cross through in various ways. But is there more than one way, there's cross-axially, you can go from the lower school all the way up through campus along there.
Right.
And if you wanted, if, let's say, classes are out and, you know, there's a big exodus going out toward the Visual Arts Center, and somebody's coming the other way, can they kind of circulate around them, go down through the, a different way to get around, to get through?
There is a stair south here as well, to get down to the lowest level.
So somebody could kind of meander around and go the other way and so on and so forth? And how, but how accessible is that? Is it, is it, is it really meandering, or is it, you know, you can kind of high-tail it and kind of get through it pretty quickly?
You can come down here through the amphitheater and come back up, so it's a little circuitous, but it's still, it's not indirect.
Can you jump down the steps there in the amphitheater and go through that, or is it not accessible to go through?
You can go. And connect here to the steps, but there is steps here as well to get into the amphitheater, but I'm sure that there will be a number of ways that we-
Is the amphitheater almost like big steps, or is it more-
Yes, 20 inches.
Yes, 20 inches.
About the height of the stair.
Yes, so somebody could kind of run through it if they wanted to.
Totally, whereas right now, they would have to go straight down towards the gray building on the right, which is cafeteria, and down those very steep steps, that's what you're, that's what the middle schoolers and lower schoolers, so this is supporting those diagonals.
And how, what is the width of those, of those crosswalks?
The majority, and they're not all the same, this one is six foot, this is eight here at the main crossing here, which will likely see the highest number of people walking through, and this is eight up here as well.
So eight is the optimal-
Yeah, eight seems to be an optimal dimension, because you can have, a five will get you two people crossing each other without bumping, eight will get you three wide, three abreast, which for all of our campus work, three abreast is generally a pretty dense amount of people, if that's what's needed to cross there.
Now, is there kind of grass on the side of it, so it's actually kind of a little bit wider, or is there shrubs on the side of it, hasn't it?
Most of the walkways involve stairs, considering this is a very topographic site, so the stairs have to have railings on both sides, so.
But along the cross-axis, it doesn't look like there's any-
There's steps here-
Yeah.
It's a little hard to see on the projection here.
Oh, okay.
And this is actually ramped here-
Yeah.
To make it accessible, so that would also have railings.
Railings, okay, okay.
What's the slope on that ramp?
On the ramp, it's, I believe we are just under 8%.
Mr. Tremontola, what's the accessible route from the lower left corner to the upper right corner?
The connection between the highest level and the lowest level, or an intermediate level, would be through the building as it is currently.
Okay.
There is no connection, that's the, all of the spaces are accessible from the intermediate level, but the intermediate level to the upper level is through a building with the L.
Okay, so if I was coming from Performing Arts to lower school to pass through this, I'm going into the building?
You would go through the cafeteria or through the upper school, either one would work.
Okay, so there are no ramps from the lower left to the upper right?
Upper right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That was, we looked at a number of options to make those connections, and the result was, the courtyard itself was a ramp. It was just so dense with ramps that it was all switchbacks.
What, tell me about your lighting in the plan here, or do you have a lighting at all?
Yeah, the majority is bollard lighting throughout, it's the same bollard light that is in the lower school courtyard that connects right here, so the lighting, for all intents and purposes, would be continuous through and at very similar spacing to provide a safe egress.
What is, if I'm, I'm looking at the, going from south to north through, and what is to the right of the stairs? Is, is that a green zone? What is that exactly?
Here?
Yeah, yeah, what is that?
That is a small counter for outdoor serving.
Along, along the path, what is that along the path?
Here?
No, no, along the walkway. Yeah, there, what is it?
That's planting area.
That's a planting area.
Yeah, it's a little easier to see on the screens here.
So if you wanted to expand it from eight feet to a little bit more, you could?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Because it seems to me that stairs are a wonderful place to gather also, so instead of it making only, if you create these little eddies along the stairs, because it's a little bit wider, it's just a nice place to hang out-
Right.
And on a sunny day, just to sit there and look out over the landscape is very nice. And if you make it just a corridor, it will feel like a corridor-
Right.
And you're missing opportunity there maybe, and I think of, when you're at Columbia and you're going across the campus, and you have to go, you cross the stairs going up to the library, the low library, people never go straight up the stairs. They're going at whatever angle they have to get to, to get to whatever side of campus they need to go to.
With human beings still-
So it's just, it's just a marvelous space because of those stairs.
And animals.
And the stairs are an amazing gathering place.
Do you like it?
The only, oh, I'm sorry.
So he likes it?
Yeah.
Mikey likes it, okay.
Mikey likes it.
So I would encourage you to think about if, if there's something to do there-
Right.
And create more of an opportunity there, because if it's too narrow and it's just for walking, it, then it looks like a pathway and not something more sculptural, landscape-oriented that creates other possibilities.
Agreed.
Go ahead.
The only issue there with the increasing the width is the slope on the southern side of that walkway encroaches on the steep amphitheater.
Well, but on the other side, it's, you said it's not.
Right. No, no, but it's on axis with the center of the circle here, which can be shifted a little bit as well, so.
Well, that's geometry.
All right, so Mr. McRae, you had a question?
For Mr. Crane, yes, please.
Yeah, sorry, you guys stand up, I know it's getting late, but, sorry.
Let me go back to the revised elevations of the addition. Actually, that's good, right there.
That's the revised here.
Upper, upper left-hand corner, that's the elevation that faces the-
North Maple.
North Maple, okay. And the lobby is-
Facing south. Facing north.
Okay. The glazed area towards the left of the elevation?
This here?
Yeah, that.
That is the stair which faces North Maple, so that's a stair, your second egress stair.
Okay, but, and that's all glazed?
Yes, with Lucabond panels here, and then down here, it just has glazing to match the window mullein pattern of that design.
Okay. My concern was actually during a-
Light intrusion?
During a performance, in the Performing Arts Center, if, to me, it looked like the lobby went through from north, from one side to the other, out to North Maple, understanding of, you know, a light intrusion, as the chairman said.
Now, that lobby, the new lobby, is to the north of the entrance into the current Performing Arts Center.
Right, and that's actually enclosed on three sides?
Correct.
Okay. And I think I see, as we had done with the other buildings, we were talking about actually internal, structural spaces that probably won't be being used in the evenings, so they would have, lights would be off.
Yeah.
So the amount of glass that you have that faces-
Correct.
Can be, can be resolved, okay. Can be, can be resolved, okay. There were a number of issues that A R C had questions on. I think you made a lot of revisions, but they have not seen this yet?
No, they see it on March 4th.
Okay. Did you discuss landscaping and lighting with them in your previous meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have landscape and lighting plans here in this package. We just have them at the back of this presentation.
Okay.
But we did have the bollards. We showed the cuts of the various light fixtures, the photometrics of the light fixtures, and now we have a new one for the revised expanded landscape.
Okay. One final question. In the new, the piers at the entrance to the Performing Arts Center, the glazing between the piers, when that comes and meets the ground, what happens at that point?
So what we have is that storefront right now. So we have a eight-inch metal, I'm sorry, eight-inch panel of the storefront, which comes down to the actual ground level. And we have a retaining wall that's sloped out from that, so that it pitches away from the building, so that we don't have any infiltration of water.
Okay, and that's conditioned actually on all sides of the addition?
Yes.
Okay. Had you thought about actually just providing whatever that panel dimension is, the material, more brick or something?
We looked at that to possibly as maybe a stone. So this way, the brick piers are clean, and then in between, it could be a stone that matches the color of the storefront. That is something we're looking at right now, because we did a sketch-up model of the entire structure, so that we can understand how that's working. And the same issue of how do you protect a steel column coming down, sitting on top of something that's that grade? How do you make sure that it's weatherproof? Is something we were just going over the other day.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
One other thing.
Do you have those emergency lights scattered through all these new green?
You know what I mean by blue light, emergency, outdoor? There's a problem, somebody runs up and there's an emergency, you guys are looking at me like I don't know what I'm talking about.
We have one on the hall.
Where is it?
Hey, Mr. Crane, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not sure the court reporter can pick you up, but then he gets really grumpy.
Apologies. So we have one, if you go on the other side of this, on the other side, you're walking to Brunswick, on that path, yes, we installed one right there.
But none in these new greenways up through all these areas?
Do they have an outdoor-
Right.
-kind of phone station? No, we have a lot of cameras, a lot more cameras that are under constant monitoring.
Public safety.
And then additional, we've hired additional security. So we had a full security audit, one hundred and eighty-seven pages in April of 2018, and have followed all the recommendations. And we're now actually doing one jointly with Brunswick, to be sure, you know, because of the movement of the kids.
Right.
And so putting it on that path between Brunswick and G A, on G A's property, that was the recommendation. In terms of nine-one-one calls, and JEMs actually recognized us for this, cell phones are what kids use, but, but we felt it was important to have the visual tier point on the path.
Okay, all right.
One other thing about the Visual Arts Center. How tall is the Visual Arts Center along the courtyard?
I don't want to cut off A R C.
It's, is that, it's, it's only two floors, but how tall is it?
Oh, how tall is, this is, it's twelve foot eight from first floor to second floor, and then eight foot eight to the top of the corridor, and then it jumps another two feet, which you can't see here.
It's about twenty-two feet.
About twenty-two.
Okay. And how wide is, is the courtyard?
This is...
What is the dimension of that?
Right here from, I believe it's sixty feet from the north facade, which we've moved to the west slightly. It's sixty feet between the one-story gymnasium building on the west, and then the two-story building on the east of our new Visual Arts Center. That's at the smallest, and then it opens up another nine feet when it goes to the connector. So there's a nine-foot jog here at the north wing. It jogs back to the east. So it grows to sixty-nine feet, basically, in width.
And how long is it?
That is four forty-eight and seventeen, it's another, you got me there, seventy feet, I believe, between the north, the south end of the north wing to the south, to the north face of the south wing.
Oh, so it's, and are you, are there trees there right now?
Guys, A R C is going to review the landscaping, and they're going to do a three-for-one tree replacement, and A R C is going to take a last crack at the landscaping. We're going to leave this open, so that A R C can finish their last look, and then we'll be done. I was just saying to Katie that all we want to do is get everybody else to finish their process. You almost don't have to come the next time, as long as everybody else has dotted their i's and crossed that their t's, we'll be ready to close it.
Well, Mr. Cohen needs to come, but you need to come. I mean, somebody needs to come. You know, we like Michelle just fine.
Oh, please, can't I come?
Yeah, you can come. But I'm just saying, I don't think we have outstanding, I know, I know these guys are going to ask you about, they'll ask you about pillars and trees and walkways, but I think we're pretty good. We're happy.
Well, if you're happy, I am happy.
We just want A R C to sign off without feeling like we're cutting them off, so we're, everybody be happy, and then we'll just, you know, we'll just open and close it, you know, we'll just close it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Crane, a quick question actually for you, actually for, for Mrs. Dulica. The change in the loop-
That was reviewed by Kim Lee Horn, to be sure that we had the proper radius and we do.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, is that a change in our previously approved site plan, or is it such a minor thing that it's not something we should be concerned with?
It is a change, but it's approved. I don't know when the loop was approved. It wasn't-
Well, it's really a part of the site plan that we're presenting to you.
Yeah, they're presenting the site plan, and they're not amending, I mean, they're saying this is, now we're doing the second phase, and here it is.
You're right, Mr. McRae. It was always there. I mean, it was part of the site plan that was last approved about a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
But we were modifying it together with the other things that you see on our site.
Okay.
But I do assure you-
Technically, an amendment to the previous approval.
Yes. Well, the whole thing is a modification of the special exceptions that have been granted over the years.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. All right, is Mr. Haslam still back there? Okay, hello, goodbye. Just kidding. Our next application is Young Pioneers LLC.
Did you get into trouble for doing this in school?
Young Pioneers LLC for a final site plan and special permit. This is for a change of use from retail food establishment. When last we met, the applicant had originally proposed twenty-six indoor seats and ten outside. That was revised, so that it would only be the twenty-six in total. And with that, the applicant has addressed the additional landscaping that we had requested, and the patio that was no longer going to be used for the outdoor dining. In addition, excuse me, they have provided us photographs of the additional planting that has been done. There, the applicant can meet the parking requirements with this change of use as proposed. And now, Mr. Haslam, would you like to add anything to that?
I don't think I need to. Quite frankly, just one observation. Mr. McRae asked about what those narrow trees were, and those are actually cletro trees, and they're recommended by A R C because they won't interfere with the wires above and sightlines, et cetera. So that's what we went with, and I gave you those photographs to show you-
I kind of hate them, but that's okay.
That's what they recommended. And Matt Pop had reminded me of that fact. So if you're good with the modification of the landscape plan, I think we're all good then.
That's for a future site plan. Okay, so if you don't have any, does anybody have any comments on this? No? The public?
One other thing I just want to mention as far as the parking's concerned. It was twenty parking spaces that were required back in 2015, and twenty parking spaces, now it's a wash, because we had twenty-six restaurant seats and twenty-six now. We've actually reduced the amount of retail space. So while we do have a lease for two more spaces on the next neighboring property, they weren't required by the 2015 application. That's why that was never recorded.
So, but why don't you just submit that proof?
Give you the lease, but it's not recorded, and we don't-
So we have it, and then have you ever, okay, we'll just have it as part of the record.
It shouldn't be dependent upon the approval, but I will submit it, okay?
Okay, so, thank you for staying for this. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay, so is everybody agreeable to closing this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McRae, could I have a motion on this item? And I've got the parking in front of me if you need it.
Who's voting?
Oh, I'm sorry. On this application is Albin, McRae, Levy, Goss, and Jeski.
Really?
Yeah, because you're seated, the seated alternate tonight.
Mr. Fox isn't here.
Fox isn't here, and you're the seated alternate.
Mr. Jeski is seated alternate, but the last meeting, when this was heard, it was Mr. Albin, McRae, Levy, Fox, Goss, and Hardman. So Mr. Jeski would be seated for Fox, who's not here.
So what we can do, but since Hardman was here, well, it doesn't matter. It's either Jeski, you were, oh, Hardman wasn't here at the-
Hardman was not here.
Yeah, okay, it's Jeski. I had it right. Why do you guys, I know, because it's wrong. Okay, all right, now, could I have a motion, please, Mr. McRae?
P L-
I'm going on strike.
Application, Young Pioneers, 159 East Putman Avenue, P L P Z, 2019, 521 and 522, for a change of use, two first-floor tenant spaces to retail food to restaurant. Moved to approve said application with the following notes. Parking will be twenty-six spaces in total.
No, twenty spaces.
Twenty spaces in total. Ten exterior spaces will, shall be removed.
No, no, wait, wait, wait. Not parking.
Yeah.
No, not parking. It's twenty, it's ten dining.
Outdoor dining.
Outdoor dining is being removed, and twenty-six indoor dining is being approved. The total parking is twenty spaces, with nine spaces being, eight or nine spaces, eight spaces, I'm sorry, being for the dry cleaner, two for the residential apartments, and ten for the restaurant use.
Okay, thank you for adding that. Revision to the landscape plan, as noted on the drawing L P one by Environmental Land Solutions dated two twenty twenty.
The commission-
Applicant-
Yeah, go ahead.
Applicant has provided to the sewer department issue, any resolved issues concerning grease trap, the existing grease trap on the site.
And applicant is removing all non-compliant, has already, I believe, removed all non-compliant signage?
Yes.
No other outstanding staff or departmental comments, and that's it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okey-dokey, Smokey.
We have minutes?
Minutes.
Two minutes.
Okay, minutes.
Okay, I have two sets here.
Jeski, you're the first one who noticed it, so why don't you move the minutes?
I only have one of them. What's, the February eleventh, I've moved to approve the minutes for our regular meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. No, you can't second, I don't think, or move it. Okay, low seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Is there another one, Mike?
Well, let's say there isn't.
I moved to approve the minutes of January twenty-eighth.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Low seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Toodles.